Hi. Well, having reached the hour of nine o'clock, let's go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors for November 17th. We begin this morning as we do every board meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance. If you will please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Is mine on now? Mine's on with it extended. We'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. It's not like we say anything worth recording anyway. All right. At this time, we're going to go ahead and have the meeting or the statement of meeting procedures, if you will please.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, November 17th, 2015. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. All right. We move on to our consent calendar. We're going to pull item 16E for presentation. Are there any other items that members of the board would like have removed from consent for discussion?
Ma'am, that would be your...
All right. Seeing none, any members of the public have an item that is on consent that they would like removed from consent for discussion? If you would please step forward at this time, please just let us know what item it is, and then when we take it up, you can make your comments in regard to the item.
I'm here for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you here for public comment? Are you... Oh, okay. Then hold one second. We'll get to public comment in just a minute. This is just consent calendar. So, any member of the public have anything on the consent calendar that they want removed for discussion? You have something on consent that you want removed for discussion?
Are you going to talk about the homeless problem with the urination in public?
That would be under public comment. Yes. And/or actually, when we get to our agenda item regarding quality of life ordinances, that would be an appropriate time to have that conversation as well. Okay. So, anything on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion for consent calendar absent item 16E.
So moved.
We have a motion, Duran, second. Holmes, roll call, please.
Duran?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye. Thank you. Okay. We have reached the public comment item. We'll take 16E after public comment. We'll go ahead and give the public comment here first. This is the time for public comment. Any members of the public wish to address the board on any item not on the agenda? This is your opportunity to do so. Please, when you step forward, identify yourself, and try to keep your comments to three minutes.
My name is Ken Martin, and I represent...
Let me make sure, sir, that we've got that microphone on. Go ahead and talk again, please.
My name is Ken Martin, and I'm representing Glenbrook Mobile Home Park, a senior park on Loomis. And they come and talked to the park seven years ago, I believe it is, on the sewer rates. And he said, "We'll have to raise them temporary, and when it is completed, your sewer rates will go back down." They raised them to $79.01 a month. And this is just like 100 or 95 people in the park. Yearly, they pay $948.12. And, uh... Let's see. Approximately 95...
Let's tell me for the year.
This here is for one year, I believe it is. It's $90,071.40. And for the whole seven years, it's $630,499.80. There's 600 people that's in this. The other ones, I don't know about. It's around it. And they paid approximately $3,982,104.00, no cents. And I wonder, no, they said, "Well, they're not going to lower the sewer rates now."
Okay. So...
I had the money appropriated at one time. I don't know why they didn't go ahead and do it.
Okay.
But that's a lot of money for a lot of people to pay.
Your park is on Auburn-Folsom, just north of Dick Cook?
Right.
Okay.
That's it.
So, SMD III, which we just decommissioned, that one right there?
Yes.
Okay. You are in Supervisor Holmes's district, and I'm sure Supervisor Holmes, through his office, would be more than happy to get in touch with you and sit down and talk about this issue. We can't take action on any item raised under public comment, but you're on Supervisor Holmes's radar now, so I'm sure he'll follow up with you, and you guys can have the conversation and bring it back to our board for any appropriate action.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
You can get my card on the front.
What's he pointing? I don't know what he's saying.
We're... Oh, the gentleman, one of the gentlemen with whom you'd want to speak is in the back waving to you.
All right.
All right?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I can't hear.
That's okay. We're just trying to expedite this for you.
Thank you very much.
You betcha.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you very much. I'm Walt Shearer.
Jenny Nysley.
From the Loomis Library Ad Hoc Committee. And we just wanted to update you and thank you for putting us on your December calendar. Realize that's a very busy and fully loaded calendar, so we will keep that brief, our presentation brief, and not as brief as this, but we have completed our survey of the community to find out what they want in the library. And we have commissioned a poll to test the viability of a sustainable funding measure for the June ballot, and we'll bring that information forward in December. So, we'll try and catch meetings with you between now and then, if we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that in a special meeting in October 29th, that the Loomis Town Council did agree to help fund that poll, up to $20,000. So, we look forward to working with you guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else under public comment? Ma'am, if you are, if your concern is in regard to the North Auburn homeless situation, that isn't...
Well, now it ties into the North Auburn homeless problem.
Okay. And that is an agendized item. That is under our quality of life ordinances, so we will be getting to that, and your comments would be more appropriate at that time, okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, members of the board. My name is Farron Call, and I am a member of the Placer County Employee Art Show Committee. With me today are fellow committee members, Kristy Cantrell, Jody Hoffman, Laura Larson, and Lori Woods. Also with us today is our committee partner, Placer Arts, represented by Rosie Stillwell, our curator for the show. We're here to invite everyone, board members, the public, and employees to our annual employee art show coordinated with Placer Arts. Our show opens today and runs through February 29th, 2016. This year's show features 27 artists from various departments. They've used a variety of media, including music and fused glass. We've brought some of the art to you today as a sampling of what you can see in this year's art show. Art is displayed here at the domes, the Community Development Resource Center, the Finance Administration Building, the Tahoe City Library, and the Administrative Center in Tahoe City. Everyone is also invited to attend the opening reception this Thursday evening here at the domes from 4:00 AM, 4:00 PM to 6:30 PM. Light refreshments will be served. We also have some little handbills outside on the front table containing the information for the art show and the opening reception. And we'd like to thank your board for supporting the arts and the employee art show.
Anybody else under public comment? Okay. Seeing none others, we will go ahead and move on with supervisor committee reports. Any board members have anything that needs to be reported out at this time? Supervisor Duran?
Yes. As part of my responsibilities with the Western Placer Waste Management Authority, I had the opportunity to attend the kickoff to the Energy 2001 Sierra College solar project. Earlier in the year, WPWMA approved the arrangement between Energy 2001, which processes the landfill gas into electricity, and Sierra College to build an 11-kilowatt solar panel project out there as part of the Sierra College, Community College Construction Management Program. Basically, what happens is, is students go ahead and they design the project, install the panels, design the brackets, design the whole unit, including the converters, and they are, they plugged it in on Saturday, and they're set to power it up, I believe, December 5th. So, just wanted to say a shout out to Energy 2001, WPWMA, and Sierra Community College. What's going to end up happening is that these folks that designed this particular solar unit are going to be able to compete for jobs in the community. So, that's it.
Thank you, Supervisor Duran. All right. Seeing no other supervisor committee reports, we will go ahead and take up the consent item that was removed from consent calendar for discussion. It's item 16E, and we will ask Mr. Warren Clark to give us a brief staff overview of this item, and take it from there.
Making sure the mics work. Good morning, Supervisor Chairman Euler and members of the board. Lauren Clark with the Community Development Resource Agency. The item before you today is a couple of actual items related to really moving forward on the regional university-specific plan, both the community and the university itself. One of the action items relates to an agreement that the board exited or entered into last December, and the other is a resolution in support of the project. Little bit of background, the project was approved in December, or December of 2008, includes both the university on 600 acres, as well as some residential dwelling units for both student housing and faculty housing. There's a community portion of the project, which has around 3,100 dwelling units on it. A number of milestones have been met over the past few years since the project was approved, most notable of which, of course, is the interest and the decision of the University of Warwick to evaluate the university portion of the project and move forward with a private university in that location. As the board knows, and one of the reasons why we're developing the Placer County Conservation Plan, it's really difficult to move forward with projects in California without local government approval, which this project has. But you also need a lot of approvals from state and federal agencies, mostly related to the Federal Endangered Species Act, State Endangered Species Act, and the Federal Clean Water Act. In that regard, the board entered into this agreement last year to assist this project with its backbone infrastructure, to be actively engaged as one of the applicants on the 404 permit to facilitate a positive outcome on that permit process. At this point in time, in order to move the project forward, the project needs financing. Warwick is focused on curriculum development, focused on locating offices in Sacramento, so they're not developing the site at this time. But there is an interest in moving forward the community portion of the project and getting its 404 permitting done right away. And the primary reason for that is to have that property available for sale with all entitlements and all federal and state clearances in place, and that the sale of that property would provide at least some, or a significant portion of the endowment that would ultimately fund the university. So, a decision has been made to split the permitting of this project into at least two phases, the community going first, the university going second. The agreement that the board entered into a year ago was that we would move both the university and the community at the same time, so it takes a modification of that agreement in order to advance the community first. What you have before you as action items is the modification to that agreement to allow the split, so the county would be involved in the backbone infrastructure, first on the community, and then, secondly, on the university. But also, you have a resolution in front of you that supports the project in general, but also supports this sequencing. There is no fiscal impact to the county to enter into this or modify this agreement. The existing agreement provides for 100% cost recovery, a staff's time, as well as any contractor consultants working with the county to help with this permit action. So, with that, staff recommends that the board both approve the modification to the agreement, as well as approve the attached resolution. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions to staff at this time? Seeing none, I'd like to ask Tim Tarran, who is the attorney for the University Development Trust, to come forward. Tim, you have any words for us here?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Tim Tarran for the University Development Foundation. Julie Hansen, Michael Faust, and Nick Cronin-Wett are also with me today. Answer any questions you may have. They're the boots on the ground for the foundation, as you know. First, I have two requests. One is, obviously, that you approve the staff recommendation. The second request I have is that you allow me to introduce Bob Hogg, who's the Northern California Project Director for Warwick University. He has a presentation he'd like to make to the board.
Certainly. Love to have him. As Mr. Hogg comes forward, the reason that I removed this item from consent today was, quite frankly, recognition of not only the fact that Mr. Hogg's here, but also the fact that our board has done something with this project that is unprecedented in Placer County's history. We have never acted as a lead agency in a private development project, and wanted to take advantage of the opportunity today, having Mr. Hogg here, and really emphasize not only the commitment that the county is making to Warwick in developing this university opportunity, but the commitment Warwick has made to Placer County. And so, the resolution does read fairly extensively in very small font, hence the glasses today. But the one thing that I do want to, the one whereas that I do want to point to is, whereas assisting in bringing the University of Warwick to Placer County is of paramount importance to the county, because the University of Warwick will bring a top-ranked academic and research university that will strengthen the county's vibrant regional economy. And so, in that vein, Bob, wanted to introduce you to all of my colleagues. I think you've met us all at one point or another, but also introduce you to the greater Placer County community at large, and say, "We welcome our brothers from across the pond to Placer County. We're pleased to have you here, and it's great to know that you are going to be here, I guess, half-time, beginning next year, in order to bring Warwick to fruition and start offering programs." So, if you would, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman Euler. Thank you, supervisors, and thank you to members of the community of Placer County. I'm delighted to have an opportunity to say a few words, and it will be a few words for now. And it's delightful to have the opportunity to see you all together in this setting at such an august moment in the development of our partnership. Many of you may not have heard of the University of Warwick. We forgive you for that, for now. And part of what we're doing during this trip out here is to try to start to put that right. So, my colleagues from the University of Warwick and myself will be spending increasing amounts of time out here, and we look forward to having the opportunity to engage with the community and with yourselves, to help people to understand what it is we're trying to do in this new university in Placer County, but also seek your help and assistance in making sure that you have some engagement and some involvement in shaping and developing what will be an exciting and very innovative new higher education venture in this region. University of Warwick, for those of you who don't know, is the sixth-best university in the UK. It's 52nd-best university in the world. We are 50 years old. Most of our competitors are 500 years old. We started life 50 years ago in a farm field. That kind of sounds a bit reminiscent of what you've got on offer to us here. Only this time, we intend to do it faster, bigger, and better with your help. And so, we're looking forward to a series of events. We've got some, we've already had some academics out here visiting, some neighboring universities and some community. We've got some maths and statistics, big data people coming out in December. We've got a pro vice chancellor coming out at the end of this month. And then, as Chairman Euler's just said, I'll be back out here January, February, March, and we'll have a great opportunity, I hope, to take this exciting venture forward. If I may, Chairman Euler, I would like to present you with a flag from the University of Warwick, which I hope you will fly with increasing pride as people get to know what we're trying to do here, take confidence in that, and hopefully, as a real symbol of the partnership between the county of Placer and the University of Warwick.
That's great. I will gladly, hold one second. I will gladly come down and accept that from you, but first, we have the business of actually approving the item that we pulled from consent. So, at this time, is there a motion to approve item 16E?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Duran, second. Wygant, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. And I will come down and present you with this, and on behalf of the county, be glad to accept the Warwick flag.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks very much. Memorable moment.
Okay. So, here in the US, we have a lot of, well, rules is the wrong word, with ceremony around our flags and the displaying of our flag. This is a school flag and not truly a national emblem. So, is there, am I going to be violating anything if I simply unfurl this here for people to see?
Not whatsoever.
Okay. Good. I just wanted to make sure.
And I will tell a story that, which was entirely my fault. When we were putting together the proposition for the University of Warwick in California, we inadvertently flew out our flagger with the State of California flag.
Oh.
And we were very quickly put in our place. So, we, I personally have learned the lessons about flag protocols very quickly.
There are a number of them, and as a matter of fact, several of the gentlemen carrying sidearms over there are very familiar with those protocols. And so, and also, as, hey, Sheriff Bonner, why don't you come over here and help me with this? We'll unfurl this here.
What color is that light?
It's very reminiscent of a Stanford red, unfortunately, as opposed to a cow blue and gold here. Exactly. There we are. Do we have it oriented properly?
Put it back together.
There we go. Come on, huh? 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 Come on, huh?
Yeah, we need a Boy Scout.
Huh? You got a Boy Scout. You got a Boy Scout up there.
It's been a while.
And if you want it, well, we can just go ahead and do it from here, as a matter of fact. Want to go ahead and corner?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Here we go. A little bit there. Need to practice a little more.
All the bit in the ant. That's all that counts. There we go. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I appreciate folks indulging us that little bit of pomp, but this is a tremendous opportunity for Placer County, having an international university of this renown coming and setting up shop here in the county, what it means for us. It's just fantastic, and we as a board are thrilled. So, thank you for allowing us that little demonstration there. We will go ahead and move on now to our first timed item, which also is a recognition, a commendation, if you will, and asks Mr. Rick Schnorr. And Rick, please tell me, did I say that right? Is that pronounced properly? Schnorr? Okay. So, as Rick is coming forward, I will go ahead and read this resolution. "The matter of a commendation recognizing Rick Schnorr for his 34 years of dedicated public service as an employee of Placer County Sheriff's Office. Whereas Mr. Schnorr is retiring from the Placer County Office of the Sheriff after serving that agency and its citizens for 34 years. Rick began his career as a part-time reserve deputy, and through his hard work and dedication became a full-time deputy sheriff. Rick has worked his entire career assigned to North Lake Tahoe Substation, where he was always willing to share his knowledge and experience with coworkers. Rick's dedication to the office as sheriff and the citizens of the community has been exemplary. Rick has served in several specialized units with the Field Operations Division, including as a K-9 officer and as a valued member of the Tahoe Dive Team. He was a search and rescue OHV team leader, certified EMT, and served as the Tahoe Station first aid instructor. Rick was professional and compassionate with the public he served, as well as respected by his peers." That should be present tense. Rick is professional and compassionate. Rick has performed with unfailing professionalism and conscientious attention to duty throughout his career, and now, therefore, let it be known that this commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors, the county of Placer, on behalf of citizens of Placer County at our regularly-held meeting, and acknowledge with great appreciation Rick Schnorr's exceptional service and wishing well in his retirement and future pursuits." Thank you. Your turn to say a few words. Well, you better get your lips in good, because Bonner's coming up behind me.
Oh, I know. I just want to thank the board for allowing me to work up there, and especially Sheriff Bonner. Worked with him when he was captain up there, and thoroughly enjoyed it, and enjoyed him as my boss, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to add, I have known Rick his entire career, and from a captain to a sheriff, there's no better man to have working with you. His conscientious attention to duty, his involvement with the community, and as a family man, I, we're all bosses of somebody, and there's sometimes you just, you hope that employee just doesn't step on the banana peel, but Rick was never that guy. Rick was that guy, every confidence that the community was going to be well-served by this great, great guy. And he's just been a great friend for 34 years. So, Rick, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you, Sheriff.
And Rick, before you exit the building, Supervisor Montgomery does have something she'd like to add.
Yeah, just on a personal note, Rick, I want to thank you for your really incredibly dedicated years of service to North Lake Tahoe and the East End of Placer County. My husband has worked with you on many occasions, and we were talking this morning about how much we're going to miss that relationship, but I'm sure that we will see you and Julie in a lot of other fun venues. Sorry I missed your party on Friday night. I hear a good time was had by all. But, you know, please, keep in touch. The community, as was pointed out, really values what you've brought to North Tahoe and Eastern Placer County, and we want to make sure that you continue to be part of our larger family up there. So, thank you again for all your years. Best of luck, and I expect to see some pictures on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. All right. Our 9:20 timed item is also a commendation. This is presented to Mr. Darrell Burris by Supervisor Duran.
Yes. Mr. Burris, Darrell, do you want to come up and stand up here? I'm going to be giving a commendation to Mr. Burris for nine years of service to the county on the Assessment Appeals Board. For those of you that don't know what the Assessment Appeals Board is, is that if there is a tax assessment, and our homeowners or businesses don't quite like that tax assessment, they can appeal it, and Darrell and his other members of the Assessment Appeals Board review that and make a decision as to whether, what's going to happen, whether it's going to remain, whether it's not going to remain. So, Darrell's been with us for nine years. He did precede my election to the Board of Supervisors, and as we all like to keep good people on, Darrell was one of those that we kept on. So, I'm going to go ahead and read this. "In the matter of commendation recognizing Darrell F. Burris for nearly a decade of dedicated public service as a member of the Assessment Appeals Board. Whereas Darrell F. Burris began his career to the Placer County Assessment Appeals Board in May of 2006..." Board in May of 2006 representing the first district, and was subsequently nominated by three different supervisors during his service. Whereas Darrell established himself as an integral member of the Assessment Appeals Board with an acute sense of detail that is indicative of exemplary service and expertise. Darrell has always insisted on giving private property owners an impartial forum where they could be heard on matters involving property assessment. Darrell has always insisted, or Darrell's dedication to community service was only outshined by his love of his family. Darrell and his lovely wife Frances have made an innumerable road trip across the country in furtherance of his family genealogy quest, and Darrell's distinctive straw hat will be missed at hearings. Now therefore let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed to the Board of Supervisors for the County of Placer on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held November 17, 2015, and acknowledge with great appreciation and respect the hard work that Darrell Burris, a devoted public servant, and we wish him well in your future life pursuits. Darrell."
Yes, can I bring my wife up?
Of course, yeah, we'll do one together, and then we'll.
Excellent, you have the floor for a few minutes, if you'd like.
You bet. Didn't expect to give a speech, but I want to thank all the supervisors for their support of our board, giving us all the assets we need to perform our job there. Really want to thank Supervisor Duran for the opportunity to serve on the board, he a great man to work for, and I've enjoyed my stay here. The clerk's office have been just great, too. There's Melinda up here, has been very helpful, Gina in the back there, they've kept us straight, they make sure that we don't step on any banana peels, and occasionally we almost have, but nothing that we could not get through. Again, my family's been very blessed by my service to the community and the citizens of Placer. I'm going to be very, it's very difficult for me to leave Placer County. This is a wonderful county, I enjoy living here, I don't want to leave, but I have a wife and a young son that think at our age, we need to live closer to family, so we're having to move out of Placer County. But this was a place that whenever I decided to retire over fifteen years ago, that was a place to have good quality of life, good people here, we've got some tremendous friends, and we're certainly going to miss them, and we're going to miss all you folks that we have met here. We've got a great board now, the Assessment Appeals Board, it's a young board, I was a senior member of the board, and I think they're going to do a fabulous job for you. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, moving on with our agenda-edged items, our next timed item is our annual report on our Williams Schools. These, as defined, are schools that are subject to additional oversight by the county superintendent. And so each year we get to hear from Ms. Garbelino Mohica about how things are going with those schools, and thank you very much for showing up again this year to give us our report.
Well, thank you very much, you stole a little bit of my thunder by setting the background on this. As Chairman Uller mentioned, by the way, good morning, happy to be here. It's my time for my annual Williams Schools report. In 2004, there was a lawsuit that was settled that resulted in legislation which subjected schools that fell within decile I, II, and III to additional oversight by the county superintendent. In State of California, we have about a thousand schools, and if you're familiar with deciles, those are equal bands, and so we're looking at three hundred schools that are in decile I, II, and III. The good news is in Placer County, we only have two schools out of upward to a hundred and fifty schools that meet the definition of a Williams School. However, I do feel I need to asteric that, because with the Williams legislation, you have a base year, and then you follow those schools for three years, and then you re-bench based upon assessment, and you typically get three new schools. This is our fourth year of looking at these two schools, and the reason why is in the State of California in public education, we are amidst a massive transition between our standards and our assessments and our accountability system, and we have our standards, we have our new assessments, but we don't have our new accountability program. So because of that, we have rolled over, we have not re-benched in the State of California our new Williams Schools, and so we have been advised to continue monitoring the two schools that we identified now four years ago instead of three years ago. So with that, our schools are that we are monitoring this year are Rock Creek Elementary School located in Auburn and Woodbridge Fundamental School that's located in Roseville. And these additional scrutiny that the county superintendent reviews in these schools is that they have standard-based aligned textbooks, that their facilities are clean and safe, that all information that's on their school accountability report card is accurate, and that all the teachers that are teaching in those schools are appropriately credentialed. And so with that, we have said that at Rock Creek Elementary School this year, for their fourth year, they have met all of those provisions of the Williams legislation, in addition to Woodbridge Fundamental School as well. And with that, that is my brief report on our two Williams Schools.
All right, well, you can report back to the legislature that you checked the box on the reports.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for doing so, Gail, always good to see you. Thank you, have a good afternoon. Moving on, we having caught up with our timed items, we move into our regular agendized items, beginning with department item number seven. This is CEDRA item, Building Division update on code enforcement after hours weekend compliance, and Ted is here to talk with us about what's going on with this.
Make sure these are my reading glasses, not my driving glasses. Good morning, Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Ted Rell. I am the supervisor for the Code Enforcement Division of the Building Division of Placer County, and I wanted to give you an update today on the Code Enforcement After Hours Weekend Compliance Pilot Program that we started in April of this year. And this program started with, was resulting from citizen response regarding Placer County businesses that are operating without licenses for particularly wineries, breweries, event centers such as weddings, private parties, those such things, or even one we had recently, which was like a flea market type event that was held on private property without the proper use permits. So this program was intended to address land use and compatibility complaints while the activity is recurring. This after-hours program helps, while I'm saying, while the activity is occurring, is usual code enforcement complaints have a tangible asset to them, like a building without a permit. Those can be addressed at any time, but the complaints of the nature of this program are, you know, noise after hours, and we have to be able to respond when it is occurring because it may stop at any time. So with that being said, the public resources we have for this program, we created a code enforcement webpage that has the information for this code compliance weekend program and after-hours program. And the primary purpose is to document and collect information and follow up with those businesses that aren't complying currently with Placer County Code or their conditions of approval. So the weekend hotline, I'll put it out there publicly, is basically an iPhone that the officers carry with them at all times during their standby hours, which starts on Thursday after work hours and continues on into Sunday, and that phone number is five three zero four zero one eight two two nine. You can call that number and get any of the officers during that watch, and they will respond. So let's say that there is a call that comes in, and a business isn't in compliance, an officer will respond to that, and they'll make a determination in the field whether or not that that business is in compliance. If they are not, we follow up with the typical code enforcement protocol, which starts with a courtesy notice of violation, where they have thirty days to comply, and then after that we move on with the rest of the code enforcement. If they don't comply in those thirty days, we'll give them an additional notice of violation, and that may result in either a judicial citation, or we'll use our, what we have now, an administrative hearing process. Since the program inauguration in April 2015, we've received fifty-seven total calls on the hotline. I'll break down some of those numbers. Eighteen of those were noise-related, that were referred to the sheriff's office, such as parties at private residences. Twenty-two of those calls were not related to the program, meaning there was barking dogs, buildings without permits, unsafe housing, and in those cases, we, code enforcement won't respond, but we'll take that information, and we will give it to the appropriate authority, whether it be Health and Human Services, or Animal Control, et cetera. We just won't, we won't do nothing with the calls, we'll move it on to the responding authority. And seventeen of those calls were related to the program. The calls related from amplified music after hours, dangerous parking on public roadways, parking in right-ofways, events without permits, a lot of those calls, we responded, and we corrected the situation right there on-site. We did have three notices, a courtesy notice of violations that went out, and currently everybody is in compliance as of right now. Everybody has complied, except for one of the hitching posts, which you have detailed information in your report there. So with that, in closing, your board should know that the program is working as intended, and for that reason, I recommend continuation of the program as implemented, and to keep your board informed, staff will be happy to give you a report next year on the success of the program. So again, my name's Ted Rell, Supervisor Code Enforcement, so if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Ted. I know Supervisor Holmes has a comment.
Good morning, Ted, thanks for the report. So when someone complains, the code enforcement goes out and inspects the complaint, and then your department works to help them come into compliance, is that?
That is correct.
All right, well, I appreciate that. So how many complaints, code enforcement complaints, actually go to the next step?
Right now, none. We've had none that have not shown compliance, and we've gone to the next step. Everybody has stayed within that thirty days of voluntary compliance.
So I think it would be appropriate to change the name from Code Enforcement to Code Compliance Department, that's just my, that's just my, it's a softer, kinder, gentler type. Anyhow, that's, I thank you for your work, and I know you guys are very diligent about checking out the complaints and helping people come back into compliance, so.
Great, thank you.
Any other board members have questions or comments, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, Ted, thank you so much. I really want to take this opportunity to thank you for all the hard work you've put into our future-to-be-named Code Compliance Division. You've really spent a ton of time on this, and you have been incredibly available to me and to my staff personally, when we've had issues raised by constituents, and so thank you. I think it's really important to note that, you know, while we have had fifty-seven calls in six months, or slightly less than ten a month, the bulk of those were not actually within the Code Compliance Division, but I agree with you, I think this is something we should continue doing, I think it very clearly serves a good public purpose, and frankly, it gives, I think, a lot of feeling that people can rely upon the county evenings and weekends, so I appreciate the report, and if my board has no other comments on this, I would accept your report and move that we continue to, there's no action, but agree with you that we should continue the program.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Montgomery.
Second, but could I?
Yes, of course.
Again, thank you, I want to, by the way, I'm the third vote for Code Compliance name, if we need that, but I just, Ted, want to thank you for your efforts, and I hope that we make sure that this message is conveyed more broadly, and so all of our citizens have a level of competence that we actually are going to enforce our code, and make sure that we can actually have the best of all worlds, but in a way that actually creates compliance as compared to controversy, so.
Thank you. I had very, very good feedback from your municipal advisory council last night with the rural Lincoln Mac, it was very positive.
Great, thanks for coming out, appreciate it, good seeing you there.
Okay, that's all we've got, and we will take the ceremonial motion by Supervisor Montgomery and the second by Supervisor Wiegand on accepting your report, and leave it up to the head of the Code and Compliance Division to negotiate the printing of new business cards at their convenience. Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you very much, it's your time.
Okay, we are going to, because interest was expressed a little earlier in an item relating to the quality of life ordinances, we're going to go a little out of order at this time, we're going to ask for Joel to come forward and have the conversation about our quality of life ordinances here in Placer County. So Joel, if you would, please.
Good morning, good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Joel Joyce with the County Executive Office, and Brett Holt from County Council, sitting here next to me. Today I'm providing you with an update on recent public concerns about a variety of quality of life issues within Placer County, and as well as receive direction from your board on whether to have staff bring back measures that will try to mitigate these concerns. There is also staff available from the sheriff's office and Health and Human Services Department to answer any questions that you may have. While the term quality of life is broad and can mean different things to different people, there are a few specific examples I want to bring forward today. Members of the public have expressed concerns on littering, dumping, graffiti, open containers, public urination, defecation, and aggressive panhandling. These issues are not unique to Placer County or the region, and surrounding jurisdictions have adopted ordinances similar to these to address their community concerns. Supporters of the broad term of quality of life suggest that these laws help maintain the aesthetic quality of communities, safeguard public health and safety, and promote economic vitality in commercial and tourist districts. While local ordinances can be redundant with state law, they can be tailored to our community and used as another tool for law enforcement. Opponents of these measures state that they can be overly broad and typically are typically aimed at criminalizing vulnerable populations. With that, staff would like to receive direction from your board on whether to conduct a full analysis and develop ordinances for your board's consideration related to the following issues: littering, dumping, graffiti, open containers, public urination, defecation, and aggressive panhandling, and others that you may bring forward today. With that, staff would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Much of this conversation, of course, initiated by a number of issues in the North Auburn area in particular, but not exclusively. We have issues mostly surrounding our homeless population in Placer County, spread throughout the county, but predominantly where we see it in the unincorporated part of the county is in North Auburn and some in the Tahoe area. And with that, Supervisor Montgomery has kind of led part of this conversation that's gotten this item to our board at this time, so I will defer to Supervisor Montgomery for additional comments at this time.
Thank you, and I want to start by thanking staff, all members of staff who are here, for helping bring forward this discussion item today. I think we are all, as Chairman Uller pointed out, familiar with the concerns that have been raised by members of the community, again, not specific to any one location, but frankly, to be found throughout the unincorporated areas of the county. There has been a great deal of concern expressed by members of the Placer County community that we need to make sure that we give our sheriff's department all the tools necessary for them to do their necessary for them to do their jobs as, as efficiently and fully as possible. And so, part of the conversation I had before bringing this forward was talking with Sheriff Bonner, you know, to make sure that he was supportive of this. And he indeed left me a, a voicemail that said, you know, "Great, any tools that we can have additionally are going to be really helpful." My concern, and I'm glad to see Brett here from County Council's office, is that whatever we do bring forward, and we don't have specific language today to address, but whatever we do bring forward, um, we make sure it's fully implementable, it's enforceable, it's constitutional, it, it will, uh, God willing, support any legal challenges that could be brought forward and, and frankly, that it meets our ends. So, if, if our board is willing to, um, uh, look at language specific to these issues, I want to make sure that we're working with the sheriff's department. I want to make sure that we're working with the District Attorney's Office to get that whole spectrum of, of buy-in from not just our board, but from law enforcement as well. Um, and I think it's important that we do this quickly. I, I think the sooner we can bring this back to this board for action, if the board indeed does give direction today to move forward on this, the better. Um, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. There are a lot of great ordinances out there that have withstood the, the test of time, have been challenged, and I think it would be in our best interest and the best interest of the community, uh, just to look for those types of ordinance. And then if necessary, tailor them to Placer County. We're, we're not San Jose, we're not Sacramento, um, but we have things in common. And so, really, those are my comments. I'm hoping that my board will be supportive and that will give, uh, direction today for staff to move forward with this. And th, those are really my comments at this point.
Okay. Prior to opening it, uh, to receive comments from the public, any other board members have anything else they want to add at this time?
Yeah, actually, I do, um... You know, I'm not opposed to, uh, to additional ordinances, but a, as Jen said, I think we need to run these ordinances by, um, the DA and probation and, and law enforcement. And, and I will add one more, um, component to it. Did, did we happen to call our expert, Robert Marbut, uh, with regards to the implementations of these ordinances, Joel?
I believe Health and Human Services Department has contacted him.
Well, actually, Health and Human Services hasn't talked to him about, about that. I actually talked to Dr. Marbut yesterday myself. Um, Dr. Marbut, uh, told me, uh, and, and I think it kind of follows a little bit with, along what you said, is that ordinances that criminalize never really work. And basically, what we're talking about is, is changing behavior. What he did say is that there are ordinances out there that encourage, um, participation in some of the programs that we have and also encourage development of more programs that we have to, uh, address this. And he did give me a case, uh, out of the city of Miami that, uh, that, it's called Pottinger, and I'll give this to legal counsel, uh, where they were able to fashion some things that were consistent with, uh, with the law and, and were challengeable. Because I think what we're trying to do here is we're trying to, um, putting the shelter aside, is we're trying to, uh, correct behavior, we're trying to provide the opportunity for those folks that need help to get it and take care of the folks that don't want any help and that are just being a burden on the community, um, to, you know, to deal with that particular issue. And I think just throwing ordinances at it, um, you know, according to what Dr. Marbut was saying, doesn't really, doesn't really do it unless those ordinances are focused to exactly what this particular situation needs. Um, like Jen said, we're not San Jose, we're not, um, Santa Clara County, we're not LA, we're not Hawaii, we're, we're, we're Placer. He also said that, uh, one of the things that we should be spending our time on is on basic, old-fashioned community policing. And I think that this discussion and the discussion of ordinances needs to be folded into the direction that we gave the sheriff's, uh, office and law enforcement to come back with a plan to address, um, this particular issue for North Auburn for the long-term, not, not just because there's a, a, a temporary shelter here, but for the long-term. And if it incl, and if it means ordinances or part of these ordinances, that's fine, but I'd like to hear that from the sheriff's office and the district attorney. Uh, if it means adding a half an FTE or another FTE, I know folks here at the, at the DIAS don't really like to hear that, but if that's something that we need, then that's something that a, a, also ought to be in the discussion. But just to put up ordinances and say that this is going to do the job is not, uh, is not efficient and is not going to be effective because, you know, from what I've gleaned from my discussions with the sheriff's offices is that we do have a lot of the things that are contained in these ordinances already in the penal code. And if we do, um, then we're basically just throwing spaghetti on the wall and trying to, you know, put a Band-Aid on something that needs open-heart surgery. Um, so I would, my, my, my thought is to put the ordinances in the pot with the rest of the items that we want law enforcement to give us some direction on. I would also, um, like to see Dr. Marbut involved in this with HHS. Uh, and, and people talk about money. I'll go back to the, to the numbers that I talked about before. We've already spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this moving forward for the shelter. Uh, in the month of October, the city of Los Angeles is going to be spending a hundred million dollars on their problem. The county of Los Angeles has devoted fifty-one million, uh, dollars to their problem. Um, I, I read an article last week that Hawaii now has seventy-eight hundred homeless people on the Big Island and they're putting money into this. Um, you know, we, we're at ground zero and, believe it or not, folks, we aren't as bad as, um, as any of those cities that I've cited where they're spending hundreds of millions of dollars on this. So, but, because I have every faith in our HHS and our law enforcement and probation, I think that it needs to be part of a broader, um, plan, uh, part of a broader, um, uh, understanding of how these things work. And if we need to run it by, um, you know, a criminal justice policy to make sure all of the components are there, I'd be more than happy to take whatever, uh, Dr. Marbut and, and law enforcement, uh, decide is, uh, would be helpful and, and bring it through there and vet it through there as well. So, that, those, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Um, prior to opening up to the public, any other supervisors have any comments? Okay. Um, I know there was at least one lady that was interested in chatting, uh, with us about this, so at this point, you'll go ahead and come on forward. And just to be clear, today, uh, the board does not have any proposed ordinances in front of us. We're not debating specifics of, of any ordinance dealing with any particular activity. In particular, Supervisor Montgomery was just interested in seeing if there was board support for directing staff to, uh, work on putting together ordinances to bring back to our board for possible adoption in the future. So, we're not actually looking to adopt something today, uh, but we do want to hear what kind of the, uh, the issues are that you think ought to be addressed with a proposed ordinance. So, with that, if you would please identify yourself for us and then, uh, please try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Okay. My name is Diane Wood. I am a property owner in North Auburn. I find that you're talking about dumping. I have brought this problem to Placer County since two thousand eight. I met with my supervisor in District Five in two thousand thirteen and presented even, uh, these figures to her. In my creek, I have a sewer, um, what is it called? Sewer truck. And I have noticed porty, potties, or whatever those horrible things that you use when you camp. Individuals are dumping into an ag pond on a Kita property. And right now, I'd like to read to you my E. coli and my fecal matter in my creek, which is flowing all the way down Dry Creek Road. E. coli is absent in my house. Total chloroform is present in my house. That is a microsm. I am ill from this at this point, so is members of my family. I have had E. coli in my mud at twenty-two thousand. Fecal chloroform in my creek, thirty-eight thousand total. Three hundred and thirty-eight thousand in the creek. Creek water, E. coli, greater than sixteen hundred. Fecal matter, greater than sixteen hundred. This report is done by a lab of the California, uh, that does California's report. I have been accused by Placer County of even wanting to shoot the head off of environmental health. I have had police at my house when I refused to accept the insane report by Placer County. So, with these numbers, the homeless are a problem, but Placer County's inability to enact its own environmental health rules are beyond belief. I have had sheriffs, when I called Environmental Health, that they had drained the pool. I called Montgomery's office, I said they drained the pool. The next day, two water trucks showed up and filled this pond. The next day, Placer County takes their water test. The next thing I know, I said this on a recording, I had sheriffs with guns here, here, two of them vests and stun guns at my house. So, Placer County, your environmental health stinks, your homeless problem is a problem, but I would like you to address the individuals that are using the IKEA pond as a sewer dump, as my creek as a sewer dump, and the poor people who live down Dry Creek and in North Auburn are exposed to all of this. I have pictures, I have film, I have watched my creek run four feet high in the middle of a record drought. So, I say to you gentlemen, I hope you listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address our board under this item prior to us taking action? Okay, seeing nobody else, then we will go ahead. Supervisor Montgomery, did you want to make a motion in regard to this?
Yeah, I would, uh, like to make that we, uh, give direction to staff to move forward on the, um, four ordinance topics that we discussed today and to, um, again, not reinvent the wheel, uh, bring something back, um, in a fashion as quickly as possible that, again, meets all those ground rules that we put out there, including particularly constitutional muster and, uh, consultation with our law enforcement partners.
Second.
And we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion by other supervisors?
Does that include a discussion with Robert Marbut?
Absolutely, if, if you would so desire.
Second, of course.
Okay. And then the only, uh, kind of just general direction is I'd like to see that what comes back to us, how it relates to, um, other ordinances that our other jurisdictions within the county might have adopted, just for consistency's sake, so that we have an idea if, if, I'm, I'm assuming this transient population, um, isn't read up on all the ordinances from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, so as much consistency as possible would probably be helpful in terms of correcting the problem.
So, move is amended.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, I would also like to see, and just a graph of what we're proposing vis-à-vis what's in the penal code. Uh, I think that, that would be important to, to see whether or not we have overlap as well.
All right. Uh, we have a motion, Montgomery, second by Wiegand. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. We will go ahead and jump back, uh, in our regular order of business. Um, and take up item, uh, seven B. This is, will be our Sunset Industrial Area Plan update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. For the past year, staff has been working on an update of the Sunset Area Plan, consistent with the direction set by your board. Today, we'll, staff will be updating you on the status of that work program. Sherry Conway, the project manager, will be making today's presentation.
Thank you, Michael. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, Sherry Conway, Senior Planner. I'm delighted to say that we are moving forward, full steam ahead with the preparation of the Sunset Area Plan update. And I'm here today to just provide you with a very brief update. The South Placer region continues to demonstrate the area's, uh, capacity to expand its employment base, and the Sunset area in particular is, uh, poised to play an even larger role in the regional economy. The past several months, uh, our team of consultants and staff have been very busy making tremendous project on various elements of the plan. The public draft of the existing conditions report, we just had it published, I'm kind of proud of it, uh, is here and, uh, available to view online. So, I encourage, uh, the, the folks, the public, to take a peek at it online. It's kind of a beefy document. Um, additionally, the, uh, economic market analysis is also complete and, uh, and a link to this document is now on our website as well. The consulting team and staff are hard at work on the opportunities and constraints analysis, as well as the land use alternatives analysis, both of which I hope to present to your board in February of two thousand and sixteen. Finally, during the spring of next year, I expect to bring forward to your board the capital improvement plan and finance plan, as well as the design vision plan and quarter standards for the new Sunset area. Our economic, uh, market study provided us with a vast amount of information regarding the Sunset area's position in the marketplace to attract, uh, businesses to our era, area. Notably, the Sunset area occupies a strategic position in a dynamic market area. The South Placer County's growth rate was more than double the rate of the region. And the Sunset area has the potential to support an expanded economic base and better utilize the large local labor forces, of which two-thirds currently commute outside of the area for their employment. So, in taking a look, uh, at our project, we asked the question, who, who are we? Who is South Placer County? So, we learned a little bit about who we are, and one of the key findings that we discovered was that the South Placer County residents are highly educated. Twenty-four percent of our residents possess a bachelor's degree, only slightly below the Bay Area's, uh, share of twenty-seven percent. Additionally, almost half of our South Placer residents possess an associate's degree or higher, far outpacing the Sacramento region and the state as a whole. Accordingly, the income comparisons mimic those of educational attainment with South Placer's median, uh, household income of seventy-seven thousand, more than thirty percent higher than the Sacramento region as a whole. South Placer also enjoys greater housing affordability and a much lower unemployment rate than the Sacramento region, the Bay Area, and statewide. We further asked the question, what do we all do for a living? South Placer County accounts for thirteen percent of the Sacramento region's resident workforce. The largest industry, no surprise here, in terms of South Placer, employment is retail trade, employing thirteen percent of our residents. But we dug a deep further, a little bit further, and we noticed that, uh, South Placer also has a greater share of resident workers employed in the finance and insurance, uh, areas, healthcare, education, professional science, and technical, uh, areas, as well as public The study also showed that South Placer County's share of jobs in the region is significantly less than its share of housing and residence. So, in order to strike a healthy balance, South Placer County will have to both increase and diversify its supply of jobs through extended, expanded commercial development opportunities, hopefully in the Sunset area. Kind of some facts and figures, since, uh, two thousand, industrial and flex places have not performed as well in the South Placer market as office and retail. Combined, only about one-point-eight million square feet of flex and industrial spaces were absorbed in the period from two thousand to two thousand and fourteen. So, it's no surprise that industrial and flex space therefore represents the greatest amount of space currently available in the Sunset area. Our study further suggested that market forecasts, um, indicate there could be demand for as much as five to eight-hundred acres of business and industrial park uses through two thousand and thirty-five. The Sunset area's potential to capture a notable share of this demand and attract a major corporate campus or destination and, and entertainment use could support more than fifteen thousand jobs by that same period of two thousand and thirty-five. We took a look at the industry clusters, uh, parallel with the Next Economy Initiative. And Placer County is currently looking at ten industry clusters, um, that we could target our efforts in growing and retaining jobs in the Sunset area. Notable among these are advanced manufacturing, life sciences, as well as education and knowledge creation, particularly because we just had, uh, our Warwick, um, representatives here. So, many of these clusters maintain staffing patterns that align with the South Placer labor force and a number of activities that are represented, um, among the William Jessup's Sacramento State and University of Warwick's research priorities. Going after these clusters... So many of these clusters maintain staffing patterns that align with the South Placer labor force, and a number of activities that are represented among the William Jessup Sacramento State and University of Warwick's research priorities. Going after these clusters will be critical to the success of developing businesses in the Sunset area. To be candid, development in the Sunset area will not be without its challenges. Our existing conditions report, remember, does identify both opportunities and some of the issues we'll need to address. Let's see. One such issue that we'd need to certainly address is the risk of flooding in the Sunset area, which presents a bit of an environmental constraint needing to be mitigated for development to occur. Our work so far has also identified infrastructure limitations, and a key consideration in determining where new growth should occur in the Sunset area is the provision of backbone infrastructure, such as water distribution facilities, wastewater collection facilities, and a comprehensive roadway network. And currently, you can see the predominant infrastructure that exists in the Sunset area is located on the eastern boundary. And the extension of infrastructure has been one of the primary limitations in the development of the area in the past. As such, identifying opportunities that will allow for the construction of the necessary improvements will be vital to the success of the new Sunset. Several facilities within the Sunset area, we do now generate odors on a regular basis. Odors, while generally harmless, do pose a constraint to the viability of development within the Sunset area. Therefore, mitigating odor impacts will lead to greater flexibility in the types of uses, and therefore will be an important component of future development. Finally, we've identified that within the Sunset area, there exists the issue of incompatible land uses. For example, the use of industrial buildings for recreational activities creates a potential for conflicts with other heavier industrial uses. However, with issues come opportunities. Both the existing conditions report, as well as the opportunities and constraints analysis that we're currently working on, identify several key assets that position the Sunset area perfectly for success. And if you're wondering why that's an opportunity, that's a commodity. Those are bales of plastic that are sold to the secondary market, so. One of our greatest assets in the Sunset area is that four highly engaged landowners own a majority of the land that could be developed over the next 20 years. The economy recovery has positioned these landowners to begin exploring options that would move development plans forward. And because of the availability of these large acreages of land, the Sunset area presents itself as a leading prospect in the region to capture any new large-scale campus users, which could result in one or more collections of multi-building campuses. As we know, the Placer County Conservation Plan will provide opportunities to preserve open space and mitigate for any biological impacts and allow for expanded development to occur within the Sunset area. Also, in the coming years, we'll see the Placer Parkway, a 15-mile-long regional limited-access east-west transportation corridor, provide connections between State Route 65 and State Route 99. The first phase of Placer Parkway will begin at the Whitney Boulevard interchange and extend to the Foothills Boulevard. Kind of a computer-generated graphic, gives you a sense. Finally, in addition to the above referenced strategies, some additional things that we want to consider to jumpstart development include expediting the backbone infrastructure investments, continuing to work with our Economic Development Department to encourage catalytic projects, developing and implementing a branding and marketing strategy, as well as collaborating regionally on economic development initiatives. In the coming months, as I mentioned, we'll be bringing forward to your board the land use alternatives, which is really the meat on the bones of this important planning effort. I wanted to also mention, for your board's information, that this Thursday, November 19th, at 4:00 p.m., at the Materials Recovery Facility, we will be holding the first of several public workshops, and are eager to unveil some of our key findings and engage our stakeholders. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Michael Johnson, who will address the Placer Ranch project. I'm happy to answer any questions that your board may have, and thank you for your time.
All right. Prior to handing it to Michael, any questions on the presentation we just started? Okay, seeing none, Michael, why don't you go ahead and then what?
As the board is aware, there was a recent land development application being processed through the city of Roseville for the Placer Ranch project. That application was recently withdrawn, and while that does create a slight hitch in the processing of the Sunset Area Plan, staff wanted to take this opportunity to let your board know that we will be moving forward with the Placer Ranch land plan as part of the foundation for the Sunset Area update. While there may be modifications to the overall land uses that are included within the Sunset Area Plan, staff believes that a land plan similar to what is shown here is critical to the long-term success of the Sunset area. There is a 300-acre campus site that's been set aside for an expansion of the Sacramento State University. Sierra College is working very closely with Sac State to look at this site as an opportunity for additional educational opportunities here in Placer County. Whether this balance of residential use is appropriate, whether this balance of commercial-industrial is appropriate, those are issues that staff will be looking at. But some mix of land use, as shown on this land plan, staff believes is appropriate, and we'll be analyzing that as we go forward. And the alternatives analysis will look at various alternatives to this land plan so that a broad base of land uses are considered for the Sunset area. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to respond to any questions the board may have.
Okay, Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Michael. The city of Roseville was processing the Placer Ranch application, and now, are they going to be working with us as we move forward with the Placer Ranch plan?
The area is within the county's jurisdiction. That said, because of the city's involvement in the previous Placer Ranch project, the city staff has broad knowledge and understanding of the issues out there. And whether it's processed through the city or whether it's processed through the county, there are areas of common concern that we will continue to work with city staff to address. Transportation network goes from the city into the county. County staff will be working with city staff to address the roadway network, to be sure whether it's Placer Ranch or some other aspect of the project, that the roadways are adequate to accommodate the traffic. As Sherry mentioned, the odor issues are a concern not only to the Sunset area, but to existing residents within the city. And the county staff will be continuing to work with city staff on those issues.
So any of the work that's in Roseville staff will be available to the Placer County staff?
It's our hope that it will be, and I know city staff is working to make that so.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Grant?
Just to add, there's quite a bit of technical studies that West Park, the developer, put together, and they've stated that they would be willing to turn those over to assist with developing a game plan for the project. I know that staff is going to be engaged. Robert and I are still meeting with the city of Roseville to work through some other big-ticket items there, just to kind of tee up the project, you know, for future development, so.
All right, thanks. Okay. Any other board members have any comments or questions on this? Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? This is not an action item, but simply an informational report on an ongoing item, which is the update of the Sunset Industrial Area. Step forward, please. Please identify yourself for the record, if you would.
I'm Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Spencer Short with the city of Lincoln, but not speaking on behalf of the city of Lincoln today. The only point that I just wanted to bring up is, the city would probably have a concern with future development in the Sunset area, making sure that we protect the investment that we have in the MRF. And so that's, you know, we're supportive of the project moving forward, and in fact, I think there are some great opportunities that we could really use to correlate some of our utilities there. So, you know, but we would just express a very much of an interest in protecting the MRF.
Got it. Supervisor Wagoner?
Spencer, yeah, thanks for coming in. I think, yeah, Mike mentioned, and I think the kinds of conversations we're having.
Appreciate the choir, man.
Yeah, you know, the appropriate discussions, and then making sure that it's vetted appropriately at the landfill authority. All of those things are of concern to us, as Michael referred to, but we thought walking our way through some of those discussions would be smarter now as compared to, when we do have an opportunity to move forward, we would have these things resolved from a policy perspective amongst all other partners.
Yeah, and I know that there's been a continuous push to minimize the buffer. In fact, at one point, I had a discussion with someone who said, you can have a quarter-mile or less buffer, and you're fine. And I'm just concerned because we want to make sure that we have that ability to deliver our refuse there, instead of trying to go over the hill, because the cost would just increase exponentially. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other members of the public, and there being no action required by the board on this item, since you're already here, let's go ahead and take up the groundwater elevation monitoring program item. Wait, is that you? That's Brett.
Brett, yes.
That's Brett. But it's also you.
It is.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. Today's staff will be providing an update on groundwater matters here within the county, and will be seeking board direction on the county's involvement with other local agencies on groundwater issues here. Back in 1992, the state approved AB 3030, which was a voluntary groundwater management program. Agencies here in Placer County have been actively involved in implementing the requirements of AB 3030 since that time. There are two groundwater plans that have been approved, one on the west side by the Western Placer County Management, Groundwater Management Authority, which includes the cities of Roseville, the city of Lincoln, PCWA, and the Cal-American Water Company. There's also another groundwater management plan that has been approved for the easterly side of the county. This is the Martis Valley Groundwater Plan, which was approved by the town of Truckee, Nevada County, Donner, Truckee-Donner Public Utility District. Both agencies continue to monitor and report groundwater requirements here in the county's area. In 2014, based upon the ongoing drought and the overdrafting of some aquifers in the Central Valley area, a new legislation was adopted, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act of 2014. While AB 3030 was voluntary, this new legislation is mandatory and requires agencies to report and monitor groundwater activities throughout the state of California. Here we have a map of the state of California. The orange color highlights the high-impacted groundwater basins. As you can see, most of them are located in the Central Valley, and it's because of this that the new legislation was put in place. There was a concern at the state level that overdrafting of the groundwater basins was occurring. As a result, subsidence was occurring, in some cases up to two feet. That is not the case here in Placer County. The basins within the county are not in overdraft status and actually are in very good condition. There are five groundwater basins here in Placer County. Low priority basins include Olympic Valley, Tahoe Valley North, and Tahoe Valley West. The Martis Valley Basin, which I alluded to earlier, is a medium priority basin, and the North American Groundwater Subbasin, which is overlaying by the cities of Roseville, cities of Lincoln, and Placer County, is a high priority basin, but it is not in overdraft status. This is a high priority basin because of its location. The American River drains in from the east, the Sacramento River drains in from the north, and because of that, we're at a crossroads here and creates great opportunities for our basin. This presentation today is focused on the North American Subbasin. Staff will be coming back at a later date to address the Martis Valley Basin. The same process I'm describing to you for the sub, the North American Subbasin, will be followed for Martis Valley. The goal of the new legislation is to attain and sustain groundwater management, and that is to assure that the groundwater levels are maintained for the reporting period of the legislations, which is a 50-year reporting period. There are two critical dates. By June of 2017, local agencies must form a groundwater sustainability agency for each high and medium priority basin. Because the North American Basin is a high priority basin, we have to have an agency formed by June of 2017. And then by January of 2022, those agencies must adopt a groundwater sustainability plan. One of the challenges that we have here in Placer County as it relates to the basin is the, we have various agencies. We have here Placer County, here you have Sutter County, over here you have Yolo County, and then you have Sacramento County. All of those agencies have the opportunity to form their own agency and their groundwater plan. Sacramento County has already informed the local agencies that they want to form their own groundwater sustainability agency, and it was felt in discussions with our partners, city of Roseville, city of Lincoln, and PCWA, as well as Cal-American Water Company, that there was value in Placer County moving forward with a sustainability plan of its own. What staff is looking for is direction from your board. As I stated earlier, the water purveyors, city of Lincoln, city of Roseville, PCWA, and Cal-AM have been very active and involved in groundwater issues. While we have been, the county has been invited to participate, the county has not been an active participant in groundwater issues. And so staff is here to ask your board whether you would like your staff to move forward and take an active involvement in groundwater issues. Because of the county's agricultural users in the northern and western part of the county, staff believes there is merit in the county taking an active role in groundwater management to assure that the interests of the county are protected as we move forward. In the audience today, we have Spencer Short from the city of Lincoln. We also have representatives from Placer County Water Agency. As I mentioned, these agencies have been taking the lead on groundwater issues and have been doing a great job in assuring that the resources of the county are well protected. Staff is looking to have direction from your board as to the appropriateness of staff and the county taking an active involvement with these agencies in groundwater monitoring. The second part of the request for you today, in conjunction with the Groundwater Sustainability Act, the state has provided funds available in the form of grants to help financially support agencies prepare the groundwater sustainability plans. This is one of the few instances where there's a state mandate that has come down, and the state has actually provided funds to help offset the long-term costs that are going to be associated with this. As set forth in your report, staff is asking and has provided a resolution for your consideration. Because the resolution and the grant application need to be submitted by December 8th, staff is asking for the board's delegation to the Community Development Resource Agency Director to submit the application on the county's behalf. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to respond to any questions the board may have.
Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Michael. A couple of items. First of all, I think since the county board supervisors have land use authority, it's only appropriate that we are engaged with the groundwater management plan. I have a clarification in the staff report on page 51. It says that the Martis Valley Groundwater Plan was prepared by Placer County Water Agency, the Truckee-Donner Public Utility District, and the Truckee-Donner Public Utility District. It's mentioned twice.
It should have been the town of Truckee that was involved in that.
All right, just one clarification. Thank you. And I want to let you know I read the report, so.
Any Supervisor Grant, thank you.
Yeah. I would, along with Supervisor Holmes, agree that the county should take an active role. Unfortunately, we had to send a fairly direct correspondence to the water authority about some shortcomings between our organizations, which leads me to believe that nobody can really protect our interests than us. So I fully support that we do move in this direction. Water's going to be an issue. We got rain now, but we don't know whether or not we're going to have to rely on that ground resource one day, and we want to make sure that we have our interests protected. So, thank you.
Supervisor Wagoner?
Yeah, concur with you.
Yeah, concur with both prior comments, and I have a question. Michael, could you talk, over the years, I've actually attended a couple of meetings of the existing efforts as it relates to the valet floor down here, but could you describe a little bit more fully how you see the organizational structure emerging and/or us plugging into what currently exists and how that should function?
The organizational structure will be determined by the agencies that are involved. At this point, staff doesn't know what role the county may provide. We will work in concert with the city of Lincoln, the city of Roseville, PCWA, and Cal-Am to determine how best to prepare a plan, what agency might be appropriate to take the lead role. The county's role in getting involved is to be sure that the county's interests are represented, and an affirmative action by your board today would allow for that to happen. But how that, the overall agency, the program would look, that needs to be determined by the agencies that are involved.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Michael prior to?
Chairman Yuler, I just wanted to chime in and add my voice to those of my fellow supervisors that I think it is important that we become part of this process, and I look forward to the conversation a couple of months from now on, the Martis Valley aquifer as well.
Okay, and did any member of the public wish to address the board on the item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Spencer Short yet again. First and foremost, I want to thank you guys for getting involved for the last eight years, the partnership. Lincoln, Roseville, PCWA, Cal-American Water have all been working toward making sure that we have a sustainable groundwater basin. And Michael indicated earlier that we have a very sustainable groundwater basin. We're proud of that fact, and we're happy that you guys are coming on board because 90% of the groundwater usage in this county is ag water. And so I think that's an important factor as we move forward and with this legislation that's become so onerous that we'll have to all engage in. So part of the, part of this is that we're happy that you're coming on board. I know that you've had representation the last couple of, I think the last couple of years, you've had representation with the group, and so, you know, I think we'd all welcome that. A couple of quick things, though. Actually, the city council of Lincoln has not taken any formal action on any of these, and we are talking about getting together with some of the elected folks who would represent each one of the agencies to have a discussion about that and start working toward these issues because the state's already indicated that they're concerned about having too much fragmentation among a basin. And so with SGA already making their decision, Sacramento Groundwater Authority has decided they're going to do their own thing. It's left now with West Placer and Sutter County, and so I think that we do need to have that discussion about who's involved and who isn't. But I do have one question about the grant that's a part of this. We are currently a priority basin, but I saw that the terminology that was being used was a stressed basin, and that gives me a little concern because we don't want to give DWR the indication that we have issues that we don't currently have. And since we are a sustainable groundwater basin, in fact, that's what this group has been working toward, is figuring out what our sustainability looks like and what a sustainable level is. So I question that, the stressed issue in the grant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Michael, do you have a comment on that?
Mr. Short is correct. The priority for the grants will go to stressed basins. What, based upon conversations with the county's lobbyists, it was concluded it was appropriate for the county to submit an application on behalf of the larger group. If there's monies available, it would be wonderful to take advantage of them to help offset the cost, not only for the county, but for the other agencies involved in the area here. So Mr. Short is correct. We are not a stressed basin, but if there are monies available, the county would like to be up there and try to take advantage of receiving some of those.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, without further comment, the board is being asked to consider items 7C, 1, and 2 in regard to the grant application. What's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
Motion, Holmes, second, Montgomery, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much. And the related items, 7D, 1 through 4, Mr. Story.
Yes, thank you. Honorable Chairman and Board, Fred Story, presenting Cedric today. There we go. My portion is on what's known as the California Statewide Groundwater Evaluation Monitoring Program, or CASGEM. That's been in place by the state since 2009. The goal, again, is to monitor and report groundwater levels and recognize basins and subbasins. Placer County at that time opted out of the program due to our limited groundwater interactions. As you've heard, the other agencies were formed, made a great plan, and have been looking at those levels and sustaining that basin in very good order. However, on April 1st of this year, Governor Brown issued his drought executive order, which requires Placer County to implement all CASGEM requirements in the high- and medium-priority basins by December of this year. Placer County has one higher priority basin, the North American Subbasin, as Michael had told you. Here is a picture of it. Within that blue area, that's the Western Placer County group, there are some orange slashed areas, I'll go into a little further, that are the areas that are outside of that group and are required to be reporting authority. Here, they're circled. One is the Sheridan area, which, as you recall, our environmental engineering department runs a water system for that area, so we actually do have wells out there and can, with your action today, become the monitoring for that. There's also moving south, there's the Lincoln regional area, which is a white area, mostly county area. I will point out, the lower portion of that, there is a small little corner that is within the Lincoln sphere of influence and would become part of their Village One. Once that happens, it would certainly revert to them, but by the time all that happens, if we've all done our jobs, we've formed the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, and it would be the responsibility of the agency, made up of all those partners, that would be responsible going forward. But in the meantime, we are the ones that need to be responsible for that area. Moving further south, there's an area in the Granite Bay area, which is also unclaimed, so to speak. And then there's a very small area that represents about a block in the Citrus Heights water area, but it's technically in Roseville. It's a quirk in the overlapping systems. And so we've worked well, seeing a slide here, oh, well. We've put together a draft plan with our consultant, Richard Schatz, who is also the consultant for the Western Placer Group. He knows the area. There are some one-time costs to improve the well-reporting capability to meet those state regulations. We would do that twice annually in the spring and fall. It's estimated to be a cost of around $13,000 annually. There are, as you heard in the staff report, there is some one-time costs as well. The draft plan is currently under review at DWR. In order for us to meet that timeline before we could bring it to you here, we had to get it in there. Again, we don't want to be outside of the regulation. The word back is, the plan looks great. They intend to approve it once they all get through it. If your board actions are approved in the plan by you today, and the plan is approved by DWR, then Placer County, in addition to all those other agencies on that map, including Sacramento and Sutter Counties, would be eligible for Prop 1 funding. Until those white areas are covered by Placer County, and I might add that Sutter County is doing the same thing to close their white areas, no one is eligible for those grants. So we tried to time all this together to coincide with the grant Michael spoke of, that we would be eligible by the time we turned it in. A little bit about the Martis Valley, as Michael had said, it is a medium priority. Placer County Water Agency is currently the monitoring entity for that basin, so there is no action required by the board. Again, we'll be bringing those issues back to you later on the Sigma portion of Martis Valley. So with that today, I'll answer any questions, but we hope that you will adopt the resolution requesting the state designate the county as a groundwater monitoring entity for those white areas only. Authorize the county to submit a notification letter to the Department of Water Resources to become that groundwater elevation monitoring entity, to adopt our draft plan, and to authorize the Community Development Resource Agency Director to execute all the associated groundwater evaluation monitoring documents that the state may hold for us. And with that, I'll happily answer any questions you might have.
Board members, if any questions, Mr. Story, Pedro's taking actions. All right, seeing none of the members of the public want to address the board, Pedro's taking action. Mr. Short, good morning.
I swear last time. Just a quick question. The rest of the Western Placer Group are involved with Roseville being the reporting entity. And I was just wondering if, what the significance is of the county stepping in and becoming the CASGEM reporting entity rather than becoming part of the Western Placer Groups, that we're all reporting together?
A fair question. I'm sure Mr. Story has an answer here.
Happy to answer that. With the new regulations now being adopted, staff felt like it would be more appropriate to join the new agency. In the meantime, we would have had to work out a memorandum of agreement with that group and gone through that whole process in order to meet that deadline of December of this year. This was the quickest path, and knowing that we would be, hoping that we would be asked to move forward, we would then, because all of that's going to revert to the Groundwater Sustainability Agency whenever that is formed.
Okay. Fair enough. Any other members of the public wish to address the board, Pedro's taking action. Okay, before us at this time are items 7D, 1, 2, 3, and 4, the various authorizations Mr. Story referred to. What's the pleasure?
Second.
The motion, Holmes, the second, Duran, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to jump back. We've passed over a couple of timed items. We'll go back to our 1115 timed item. I'm sorry, 1015, thank you. Our 1015 timed item. I had not adjusted for daylight savings, did not fall back. So we have a request for issuance of an RFP. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chair Yuler, members of the board, Jeff Brown, your Health and Human Services Director, along with Dr. Rob Oldham, our county's Public Health Officer, Public Health Director, and Medical Director for our department, and Maureen Baumann, Director of our Adult System of Care and also our community clinics. We're here this morning with a recommendation that your board approve the release of an RFP to solicit a medical organization to establish and/or expand comprehensive primary care and dental clinic services and provide management consultation services to existing county clinics. This morning, we will provide you with a brief overview of the history and current operations of our two rural health centers, one in Kings Beach and one in Auburn. We'll describe recent changes that have removed the majority of our statutory responsibilities to provide these services. We'll highlight both cost-saving mechanisms that we've instituted over the past few years, but also highlight the structural deficit of our clinical operations. And finally, we'll share with you the benefits of an alternative service delivery model that we would like to explore. So at this point, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Maureen Baumann.
Thank you. So a little bit of a background, in 1983, Placer County established the Rural Health Medical Clinics in both Auburn and Tahoe, is really the most cost-effective way of providing clinic services. The Rural Health status allowed us to bill for an enhanced Medi-Cal rate, and the clinics provided, in addition to that, the clinics provided the Medical Care Services Program, MCSP, which is the program for indigent people in Placer County, a program that Placer County is mandated to perform under the Welfare and Institutions Code 17,000. As the patient population increased in South Placer, the county did attempt to establish a Rural Health Clinic in that area, but due both to the dense population and to the number of physicians that were available there, we were never able to actually achieve that status. And so although there was a Roseville clinic that was established there, they provided some services, mostly to the MCSP population, it really was never able to generate enough revenue sufficient to offset the operational costs of that program. But I would say, even with a higher Medi-Cal reimbursement rate that we enjoy for both Auburn and the Tahoe clinic, the medical clinic has required a significant amount of county investment, funding each year, to offset the actual operational costs. So currently, just to give you a status, the Placer County Medical Clinics in Auburn and Roseville, currently, Auburn and Tahoe, currently provide very high-quality medical care services and a medical home for approximately 3,500 persons. In the past 12 months, 2,600 individuals received 13,000 visits in Auburn for primary care services, and 900 individuals received 2,030 primary care services in Tahoe. Also, in the last 12 months, about 2,800 individuals received additional services in Auburn and Tahoe medical clinics, such things as immunizations, women's health, child health, and dental services. With all the services combined, the medical clinic served about 6,300 individuals in the past year. Now to review some of our efforts to address the financial issues. Staff have attempted to reduce costs by privatizing services, increasing productivity, and limiting services to county residents. Just a brief review, in December of 2010, the Auburn Dental Clinic was closed, and Chapada Indian Health Services, that was the dental clinic in Auburn, was closed, and Chapada Indian Health Services was contracted to operate these services. Then in August of 2013, with the implementation of the medical managed care, pharmacy services were closed and transitioned to a number of private pharmacies that accepted Medi-Cal reimbursement, with the huge number of people now eligible for Medi-Cal. That actually increased access to many of our, many of our Placer residents. And then in November of 2013, the Roseville Medical Clinic was closed, and patients were transferred to WellSpace Health, which at that time was a newly established fairly qualified health center that had opened in conjunction with Roseville-Sutter, and some of those patients came back up to the Auburn Clinic. Earlier this year, the medical clinic stopped serving out-of-county clients. This action affected an estimated 1,300 out-of-county patients who had been receiving services in Auburn, and in Tahoe, 500 patients receiving primary care services, and 680 patients receiving dental services were affected. All of the affected individuals were provided with referral assistance to providers or resources in their county of residence. Since this action, I wanted to give you an update. We've continued to evaluate the staffing levels of the clinic. And last week, we made a decision to reopen to Placer County residents who had Medi-Cal in the Auburn area and to any Medi-Cal recipient in the Tahoe area. This is because we had staff that had capacity, and this change will result in using all of the available staff time that is available in the clinics now.
So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the financial environment we find the medical clinics in. One of the major factors affecting healthcare today is the Affordable Care Act. So the major provisions of the Affordable Care Act were implemented in January of 2014. And under that, indigent adults, at least most indigent adults between the ages of 18 and 64 are currently, are now eligible for Medi-Cal. So these were people who previously were uninsured coming to our clinics, who are now eligible for Medi-Cal. And as a result, the managed care Medi-Cal plans are now responsible for this population, not the counties. So previously, the counties were responsible for providing services, medical services to the indigent population. So as a result of this, our medically indigent services program here in Placer County has been reduced to zero participants. These changes in our county's indigent care responsibilities come in the context of ongoing financial issues that our medical clinics have faced over the years. Even with additional revenues that have come with many of our previously uninsured patients now qualifying for Medi-Cal, our reimbursements are still insufficient to offset our high operational costs. Our clinics continue to require a significant general fund contribution each year. In addition, our clinics are not large enough to reap common economies of scale, and our Auburn clinic building is near the end of its life and in need of upgrades. This next slide shows the trend over the last five years in the total number of different patients seen in our clinics. So the blue line at the bottom is the total number of patients, and then the red line at the top is the number of annual patient visits, or in administrative speak, encounters per year. You will notice that the blue line, the total number of patients served in a year, is currently about half of where it was three or four years ago. The red line, the number of encounters, has also declined over this period of time. However, you'll notice that the rate of decline in encounters has not been as fast as decline in the number of patients. If you compare the top to the bottom, you get a ratio of the number of encounters per year for the average patient. So for fiscal year 2010-11, this was around two and a half encounters per patient on average, and today it's almost four encounters per patient. This ratio can be important in kind of evaluating the access, the quality of care, and also the complexity of patients. So more complex patients end up requiring more visits per year. So despite the reduction in the total number of patients and the number of encounters over the last five years, our clinic's total costs and the amount of county general funds needed to support our operations have remained relatively unchanged. So this is reflected in the second graph that shows the trend over the last five years in the total cost per encounter, the blue line on top, and the county general fund per encounter, the red line here on the bottom. red line here on the bottom. Here you notice that both of these tend to be increasing over time, but with greater proportional increases in the total cost per encounter than the county general fund per encounter. You might also expect to see a more rapid rise in county general fund per encounter, the red line, to parallel the blue line. And normally, that would be the case, but in this situation, we had a modest gain in per encounter revenues that slightly mitigated the need for even larger growth in county general fund. This modest increase in per encounter revenues was primarily due to a change in our payer mix with large numbers of patients who are uninsured now qualifying for Medi-Cal, providing us with the opportunity to get much more favorable reimbursements than we previously received for these patients. So your commitment and support for our county-run clinics and the tireless work of our county staff over the years have not only provided a tremendous benefit to the patients we serve, but also the overall health of Placer County. With that said, we're mindful of the reality that few county governments run their own clinics anymore, and instead they rely upon hospitals and community clinics in the healthcare delivery marketplace to deliver care. Other medical organizations have strategic advantages that may allow them to provide a comparable level of service to patients in a way that's more financially sustainable. So for instance, hospitals and not-for-profit community clinics enjoy the support of much larger clinical and administrative infrastructures that may provide them economies of scale that our clinics simply do not enjoy. Certain community clinics may be eligible for financial incentives for providing care to the uninsured and individuals experiencing homelessness. Hospitals reap most of the cost savings that come from providing outpatient care that keeps uninsured patients out of the hospital, and are rapidly acquiring or partnering with outpatient clinics in order to improve the quality of their entire continuum of care so they can save lives and reduce costs. In addition, hospital-affiliated clinics and some community clinics often have much better access to specialists, and sometimes even offer specialist appointments alongside primary care. So this improves patient care and also reduces the need for significant numbers of administrative staff necessary to manage the often onerous specialty referral process. Some community clinics are eligible for an enhanced reimbursement for satellite clinics and mobile clinic services where our clinics are not. So there is significant demand for satellite and mobile services, especially in schools, in rural areas, and among underserved populations. Finally, our, some of the market offers some flexibility. One of the issues that we encounter is attracting providers, especially doctors and nurses. And so some of these clinics in the community offer loan repayment for physicians and other recruitment incentives that we're not able to address.
Try pushing the, I think they just made it live for you. Go ahead. It's pushed in.
There you go.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. So in summary, we recommend that we move forward to explore the expansion of community and/or hospital clinic services and a possible transition of county patients to a new provider. We believe such a model provides a potential to ultimately expand services and provide more sustainable care to, particularly to low-income residents in our community. And I just want to mention, if you approve the release of this RFP, we will return to your board for any approval of any recommended proposal. So this concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Fantastic. All right. Any board members have any questions of staff prior to us taking action on the item? Super, Super Roger Wagon.
Logistically, briefly, any comments as to how the transition went with the dental service to Chapada?
That was before I was in charge, but as I understand it, there were a couple of layoffs, and the transition of patients over to Chapada went fairly smoothly, and that service has remained intact since that time.
Thank you.
Super Roger Montgomery.
Maureen, thank you for being here. You sound like you should actually be at a clinic.
Actually, just laryngitis. I'm fine. I don't, I can't.
I was hoping whatever it was.
The doctor's willing to sit next to me.
Yeah.
That ought to tell you something.
Exactly. So could you go back to the chart that showed the cost per patient? Yes, that one. So that's through the middle of this fiscal year. The $204 figure that is the general fund cost per patient, if I understand that correctly. Do we have any expectation that that will change in any way since we're no longer serving out-of-county patients?
Let me clarify. It's not through the middle of this fiscal year. It's through the end of last fiscal year.
Oh, I'm sorry, 14, 15, yes.
And, you know, to put it in perspective, our total cost, $379. The reimbursement is the difference between those two lines. So it's $174. We average reimbursement per visit. And so we have to make up the operating loss with county general fund at $204 in our budget for this current fiscal year. Our total deficit that we ended the year on, in terms of, when I say deficits, the county general fund we needed to offset our operating losses, was $4.2 million for both clinics last year. We anticipate that increasing to $4.2 million, so about a 5% increase.
And do we see that changing in any meaningful way since we're no longer serving out-of-county patients, or do those relative amounts remain the same?
Those relative amounts, amounts will remain the same. I mean, we might get some small improvements, but we don't see those significantly changing over the next year.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Other questions by board members? Super Roger Holmes?
Oh, I just want to make a comment on the transition to Chapada with the dental clinic. I toured it, and I think there's more than 15 dental chairs, at least 15 dental chairs in there. So it's a great expansion, more availability at a lower cost for the residents. So just wanted to make that point.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any members of the public want to address, oh, I'm sorry, Super Roger, I apologize.
And this is directed at the doctor. In addition to being able to provide tuition reimbursement, it's, is it possible that going out, outsourcing, if you will, will also provide access to different types of hours? They may be able to have expanded hours. They may be able to offer prescription reimbursement, other kinds of things, that we, you know, in addition to those things that we can offer physicians, but are really service-oriented?
Yes, and I will say our clinic is very service-oriented within some of our constraints. But yes, when you look around at other clinics in the area and in the healthcare environment, right, they have evening hours and weekend hours and additional services. So optometry, you can get your eyeglasses there, actually bring a lot of the services into the clinic that really enhance the experience for the patient, the quality of care. So that's really one of the hopes.
And, and this is directed to Jeff. That delta and that savings, you've got things that we can apply those to moving forward in different things. Obviously, we talked about some of them today.
Yeah.
And there's other ways we can use that money more efficiently for the public.
Yeah. Any, any federally qualified health center or hospital health center would most likely be able to run these operations at cost over the long haul. They might need some transitional costs. So that would certainly free up that county general fund, which could be invested in other priority programs where we have a need for services and we don't have any demand, either in the other public sector or the private sector.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, now, any member of the public wish to address the board on this item? Prior to us taking action. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dorian Rogers. I'm a property owner in Newcastle, and I wear two hats when I present to you today. One, as a taxpayer, which I just paid. And two, I'm also the nursing supervisor at the Placer County Medical Clinic. I come to you. I've read the proposal. I've talked with both Jeff and Maureen, and part of what is in here, I find, I have questions. This isn't an issue about whether or not I'm here to change your minds. This is an issue as to whether or not there are questions about whether this will be best for our county. Some of the things I'd like to point out to you is, according to our fiscal department, we've actually made $1 million today. We have, this year alone, made more and got better reimbursement because of our refinement of giving services to our county and our residents. We've made more money than we ever have in the past. Okay? Secondly, dismissal of patients. Any patient that comes in makes money. Any patient that comes from out-of-county brings revenue to our county. Now, the dismissal of patients occurred and ended as of October 24th. How do I know that? I didn't. Okay? There were over 800 county patient dismissals. Many of those patients that were on the list of over 1,300 actually lived within our county borders. They brought in tax documents, whatever, and they have been capped. Now, the interesting thing is, is now that we've just dismissed patients from Kings Beach, which is our Tahoe-area clinic, we have now, within three weeks, now reopened to out-of-county patients. I question this. Again, I'm not here to change your mind. I'm here to raise questions. When we go and we discuss whether or not other people can take over our clientele, our clientele are the low-income, the indigent, the working poor. Many of our patients require other services. We have a lot of disabilities, whether it be physical or mental. We get calls daily, daily. We've tallied about 75 a week. Are you taking new patients? Are you doing this? Are you doing that? No. In December of 2014, we respectfully requested that we close our doors to open patients. After being open for over a year, taking the influx of the new Medi-Cal patients, the managed care patients, we needed a breathing moment to stabilize that population. Anytime you go to your physician, it's a get-to-know-you time. May I have more time?
Well, if you would, please can try to conclude your comments.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Just like with your physician, we needed time to settle them in. We did that. Three months later, we asked to be reopened again. We're open for a blink of an eye, and we're closed. We've been closed since, until last week, at which time we have been opened. So when I look at these numbers, what I see are the numbers of times that we've been closed. In March, we could have been taking in our county residents. We could have diminished. The number of patients that we have diminishes the number that you guys pay. The other question I have, if our fiscal is telling us we're making money, I would like, as part of leadership, to be able to take a look at our budget. Where are we overflowing? Allow us to help trim the fat. Placer County is a leader in California. We have been a leader in everything that we do. Let's continue. We are currently one-eighth of, and we represent, one-eighth of the Health and Human Services budget. We service over 6,000 patients. We produce revenue of our own. The other thing is, is I'm just asking, I'm asking for further investigation. Allow the leadership team of this clinic to take a look at where that $4.1 million has been spent. Can we trim the fat? Can we help you to be and continue to be a leader in the state of California and show everybody how it's done? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anybody else want to address the board? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Holly Leeds, and I am at the moment the only full-time physician that you have at your county clinic. In part, that is because we have not been allowed to open, to hire any more physicians. And when I talked to Dr. Clark back in 1999, and offered my services rather than to open a private practice, a private practice that I built on Medicare and Medi-Cal, and never dropped those patients out, regardless of the fact that unlike the 179 average dollars that they get per visit, I was getting an average of 18 per visit. And Dr. Clark said, there was no place for another full-time doctor. Once again, we appear to have no place for another full-time doctor. I'm going to quote something that one of you guys said in 2010, when the stone in front of our clinic was dedicated to Dr. Gordon Sec, who founded the clinic. His legacy includes the Placer County Medical Clinic, which he established, and which continues in his spirit of providing a treatment center for all the people of Placer County who are in need of medical attention and lack the ability or resources to that vitally needed care. We discharged the out-of-county patients. No, they have not found homes. We get phone calls. I get email messages through the MyChart system. I get phone calls from, one of the places that we're talking about sending and asking for an RFP is the folks in Nevada County at Western Sierra. I got a phone call last week from a P.A. saying, I'll do the primary care. Would you continue to write the narcotic prescriptions for the patient's really bad hips that didn't get fixed when she had her hip replacement? No, I don't write the, I'm not a pain specialist. I do that as part of primary care. I'm here on behalf of the patients. I'm here on behalf of the woman who had healthcare here for 18 years, got married, moved out of county, is still on a Medi-Cal plan, and I had to say goodbye to her because she's not a county patient. Meantime, we're being told that we're not serving the in-county patients, but our schedule has, we have been locked to new patients for almost a year, a time at which there were holes in my schedule. There were big holes in Dr. Shu's schedule, and he's one of the people who left because the benefit package is not as great as it is in private practice. And there's no question that it's not easy to find physicians, but I know there are physicians out here, there who would want to work in this clinic, and they've already been told we're not allowed to hire. So on behalf of the patients of Placer County, I would ask you to think about this carefully. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. Any other members of the public want to address the board on this item? Prior to us taking action.
Hello, Chairman, members of board. I'm Alexa Curtis. I've been a provider in this region for 25, well, for 25 years, and my husband is a primary care provider as well in this region. I'm also the Director of the University of San Francisco Nurse Practitioner Program, and the Chair of the Department of Integrated Healthcare, as well as the President-elect of the California Association of Nurse Practitioners for this region. So I want to make two points. Number one, actually start by concurring with what I've heard before me. These are stories that I understand as someone who works at Placer County Medical Clinics once a week, supported by the University of San Francisco. The University of San Francisco pays me to come to Placer to work alongside students to help train future rural healthcare providers. The first point, I want to make two points. The first is that the quality of services provided at Placer County Medical Clinics is exceptional, as was previously noted. In my position as Director of Nurse Practitioner Program and on the Board of Directors for the California Association of Nurse Practitioners, I travel the state, and I have the opportunity to be in front of qualified health centers across the state. And I can tell you the qualitative difference between a clinic that is owned in spirit, if not monetarily, by the county versus clinical services that are outsourced. The services that are provided by people who are invested in the county consistently provide the highest quality of patient-centered care for the most vulnerable populations. This is what Placer County has been doing since I've been associated with them for, you know, almost close to a decade now, and you should be very, very proud of these services it provided. Anytime we close, a point of access for healthcare for the most underserved population is a tragedy, and it's counter to the overall goals of the healthcare reform. When you close a community-owned heart and soul of a clinic for a community, this is a tragedy that affects individual lives. The second point I want to make is that Placer County Medical Clinic, as I alluded to previously, has served as a vital training center for future rural health providers, not just the University of San Francisco, but UC Davis and Stanford Medical Center. I read the reviews of, from students about their experience at Placer Medical Clinics, and they rave about the training they have received alongside these amazing providers. As you well know, healthcare reform has expanded the need for healthcare providers. Much of the care to the most vulnerable clients is being provided by nurse practitioners now, and that is increasing in the future. Anytime we close an access for training future healthcare providers, particularly among a client base that is vulnerable and with multiple core morbidities. among a client base that is vulnerable and with multiple core morbidities, we reduce the ability to have, to staff these clinics with providers. And to end, I just do want to pull out one comment that is in your memorandum as of eleven seventeen. It is unarguable that the majority of Placer County statutory responsibilities to provide health care have effectively been eliminated. Unarguable. I would hope you would consider the moral responsibilities as the elected representatives of the citizens of Placer County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board on this item? Okay. Board members have any follow-up questions or com- yeah? Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see you coming forward. Come on.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bill Thomas. I am the program supervisor over a couple of different programs at Placer County Medical Clinic. I supervise the behavioral health team as well as the medical referral team. In regard to the behavioral health component, the community clinic has been trying to integrate behavioral health with physical health in order to improve the outcomes, both physical, related to the physical health as well as the mental health of our, of our patients. And we recently, in the last fiscal year, were given approval to hire a program practitioner, client services practitioner, to help with the administration of the behavioral health program, who would have been an LCSW, which is also able to bill at the same rate as the other providers, the rural health rate. It's one of the most efficient reimbursements in terms of the cost with the, the cost of the services provided and the reimbursement that we get in return. We were able to go through the process of interviewing, and I was able, ready to make a selection of an individual, and we were then told that we were not going to be able to hire this person that would allow us to increase our revenues. Would like to be able to actually attempt to implement what we're wanting to do on the behavioral health side and, and not be limited in terms of being able to do the kinds of things that we think will make us a viable operation and a viable clinic. I really believe that we can do that if we have all of the information that we need and are allowed to operate the way we'd like to be able to. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Come on forward. Is there anybody else after this lady who would like to speak on this item? Okay, you will have the final word from the public on this item.
Good morning. My name is Catherine McCartney. I'm the Administrative Secretary for the Medical Clinics, Auburn and Tahoe. I've been with the clinics for over seventeen years, and I've seen a lot of changes throughout the years. What I've been most proud of is the board and how they have supported the medical clinics and all of the innovations that this county has put forth for other counties within the state. I would truly hate to see that we would put more effort, time, and money into helping the homeless, though I know that that's a big situation, rather than to help the community as a whole stay well and the community of folks who need us. It is very difficult for these patients to find care elsewhere because they don't get paid very much under regular Medi-Cal. I also believe that some of the information that has been stated here needs to be investigated differently because I, in my opinion, some of it is not accurate. So I would hope before you make a decision today that you would actually look into this information more, with more of an effort. And that's all I have to say. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. There being no other members of the public, want to bring it back to the board for any thoughts before we take action. Supervisor Holmes?
If we approve this request for proposals, how soon does the requests go out, and how soon do we expect to have it?
The request would go out in the next week. We could get proposals in as early as the week before Christmas. Then the proposals would have to be evaluated. If there was a proposal that we thought had merit and we wanted to recommend approval for, we would bring that back to your board sometime in either January or February.
And that would give us time to address some of the comments that have been brought forward?
Absolutely.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, thank you. Couple of quick thoughts on this issue. Some of them I've already discussed with you, so they shouldn't come as a surprise to you. One of the things that I want to make sure is included in any RFP within the legal limitations is that all our current staff have essentially first right of refusal to stay if indeed we do say, "Let's go ahead with an RFP," and if indeed someone other than the county takes it over. I think it's critically important that we make sure that the people who do have a long-term commitment to the county and to the patients they serve are able to remain in their positions. Second, I would love to see, I wasn't familiar with the Nurse Practitioner Training Program. I would love to see something in the RFP that not only allows that to remain, but, but says it needs to remain, because it does sound like it's an incredibly positive program that we really should look at retaining. And then last, again, if this board does decide to go ahead with the RFP today, I would suggest, in parallel with that, in conjunction with the RFP, there were a number of folks today who said they would really like to sit down with HHS staff and take a look at the budget and see if they can come up with cost savings recommendations that maybe meet our goals that we're trying to go for through the RFP. Obviously, if we can meet them in-house, if we can meet those goals in-house and still retain our staff and that long-term connectivity, that's probably a better outcome than, than going to an RFP and bringing a third party into the, into the situation. So again, I would just like to suggest that if, if the board does say, "Yes, let's go with an RFP," in parallel with that process, you do work with the staff who are here today who have indicated a willingness to sit down and have that conversation, not presupposing at all what the end result might be. We might come up with something fantastic that really works, or everybody might look at the numbers and go, gee, that's really hard not to crack. So those are my comments.
Other board members have other thoughts? Okay. Supervisor Duran, yes, sir?
Yeah, you know, in principle, I, I agree with, with what Jen's saying, but for practical purposes, I think it's going to be really difficult if, you know, to retain staff were getting out of the clinic business. You know, similar to what we did with SMD-1 when, when that came offline, I think we can use our best efforts, but, you know, to condition anything that we do on, you know, specific retention of employees, I think it's going to be tough. You know, that's, that's the, the practical side of me. And, and I think, yeah, there's a cost-saving size, but a piece of this, and I get that. But what's more intriguing for me is the additional services and the additional opportunities that the private sector can bring into the mix here. And, and I think, you know, we're investigating this RFP. I think we're, this is still a work in progress. There's a lot of opportunities to refine what we have, and if the ultimate decision is made that it's in everybody's best interest to go in this direction, then I think that's something that we have to live with, you know? That's it.
Okay, thank you. My only other thought, very similar to what's already been expressed, is that the, if should the board vote today to move forward with the issuance of the RFP, simply allows us for that, the opportunity to provide with perhaps greater clarity, the, the service offering as well as the cost for what we have right now versus what is available within the private sector. Moving forward with the RFP is not in any way, shape, or form a decision to move away from our current service model. It's simply the exploration of what's available out there within the private sector and allows for, I think, more specifically, that bright light comparison that you alluded to, that many of you alluded to in your comments. So I welcome the opportunity to, to, to have that conversation, and between now and when responses are received that might be presented back to this board, I encourage those of you that spoke to seek out opportunities to meet with supervisors individually and let us know what your concerns are, because I have a number of questions about the numbers that were raised, not the appropriate form to dig into them too deeply, but I have a number of questions about the, the numbers that you raised and the revenue associated with these, the, us providing these services. So be happy to meet with you in the interim period to have those conversations.
Chairman, you look before we go to a motion.
They'll turn it on if not.
Now I'm on.
There you are.
Okay. Darn buttons are backwards today. Two things. One, I just want to make really clear that the, the proposal, even if we do go forward with an RFP, is not to close the clinics. I, I did hear that language today, but to have a third-party group come in and operate our clinics. I've expressed to Jeff very strongly that I would have major opposition to closing our clinics in Kings Beach or here in Auburn. Not something I'm even willing to entertain, that question, certainly not at this point in time. And so I know Jeff already knows that, so I'm not saying anything out of turn here. It, it sounds like the board is going to want to go ahead with the RFP, and I'm comfortable doing that. While we may not condition this other conversation with staff on that RFP, the board may not be willing to do that, I would like to just ask for HHS, HHS staff to work with the folks who are here today to see if they can identify cost savings outside the RFP process, because I think it's worth exploring every, every option, not just saying, "Here's a path and we're going to go down it," but going down that path while having a different conversation that, that might get us to the outcome that we're all looking for. So again, just my comments.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a, a motion on the release of the RFP?
Second.
Okay. Motion Duran, second, Wiegand. Let's go with the roll call, please.
Duran?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
You alert.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much. Maureen, while you're here, let's go ahead and take up your department item that we have, item eight.
Thank you. So we have before you a revenue agreement with the California Department of State Hospitals for the conditional release program, also known as CONRAP, to provide mental health services to individuals released from the state hospital. The revenue amount is four hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and forty-eight, and it's for the fiscal year of July two thousand and fifteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. Also asking to authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to extend the duration of the contract for two additional years, one year at a time, and to sign any subsequent amendments up to ten percent. Quickly, a little background, since nineteen eighty-six, that a California Department of Mental Health, now the Department of State Hospitals, has funded the Placer County's CONRAP program. The program provides mental health treatment and supervision to persons who were required by the legal system to participate in treatment as a condition of their release from the state hospital. The goal of the program is to ensure the greater public safety in communities through mental health assessment, treatment, and supervision to clients who are in outpatient treatment. I would just point out that only five percent of participants are re-arrested within one year of successful completion of the program, and eighty percent remain rest-free for four years after their dismissal of the program. The program is very intensive. People are receiving regular home visits, group counseling, individual treatment, urinalysis testing, and close supervision and case management. In addition, the staff and the funding evaluates and assesses people that are continuing to be in state hospital as part of that process, for they would then be coming out into the community. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's a revenue agreement. It's included in the department's budget and recommend approval of the contract.
Okay. Questions? Any members of the public want to address the board on this item prior to us taking action? All right.
No approval.
Second.
And we have a motion. Montgomery, second, Duran, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And let the record reflect that Supervisors Wiegand and Holmes are temporarily absent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to jump back in time to our ten-thirty timed item prior to us taking our eleven-thirty timed item. So at this time, we will hear from Mr. Wright out and our facilities folks about the fairgrounds.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of your board. Mark Wright out from Public Works and Facilities. Ken Grimm and I are here today for today's presentation on the Placer County Fairgrounds. We're joined by members of the Fairgrounds Revitalization Committee and representatives of the Placer County Fair, Fair Association. In this item today, staff requests that your board receive an update from the FRC and provide direction on their focus, approve the Fifth Amendment to the operating agreement with PCFA, approve the First Amendment to a loan agreement with the Fair Association, and then approve a budget revision to create a new fairgrounds repair project and shift two hundred thousand dollars into that new capital account. This presentation follows our discussion on September fifteenth, when your board directed us to provide PCFA with contracting authority through the end of two thousand and sixteen. Staff has done that and met with PCFA to also talk about the maintenance and operation issues of the site. We've also recently met with the county auditor in the Fair Association to discuss reviewing their financial records so they could potentially apply for state monies. In addition, the FRC continues to meet regularly, and Vice Chair Lisa Worthington is here today to provide an update. Regarding the Fifth Amendment pursuant to Government Code twenty-five nine oh six, this document provides a three-year term, which is cancelable by either party on ninety days' notice, and it provides contracting efficiency and also certainty for the community that events can go on and they can plan for the future. It defines the Fair Association's contracting procedures and focuses them on the fair by addressing existing uses on the site. This includes the schools that are there, the Rock Rollers Gem Society, and H and L Towing, whose agreement has expired and they're finalizing removal of items from the property. While the county has received no new proposals to operate the fairgrounds, the agreements, assignment provisions remain in effect should your board direct that course of action. Staff can also explore other management structures for the fairgrounds if so directed by your board. Just briefly regarding the loan agreement, this First Amendment, which we've negotiated, it adjusts the repayment deadline, so it coincides with termination of the operating agreement, provides continuity across calendar years for the fair operations. They have repaid their prior loan, and they're currently eligible to borrow about forty-eight thousand dollars from the county. And again, to, just briefly, to follow up on your board's September discussion about a county investment in the fairgrounds, staff has worked with PCFA to develop the unprioritized list that's in Attachment Three of your board memo today. It includes many near-term needs and is provided to begin a discussion about these issues and any potential county investment. With your direction, staff can work with the Fairgrounds Revitalization Committee, the Northern California Construction Training Program, that's a probation program on-site, and the county's Capital Improvements Division, to refine the list, evaluate individual buildings' revenue potential, and find strategies to leverage any county investment. We're pleased the FRC is interested in beginning a dialogue about long-term solutions and is willing to help prioritize these near-term facility needs. The attachment reflects our recommendation that any county investment would fund facility improvements and that the loan structure would fund any operating costs. We've had lots of conversations about the Speedway, and building maintenance staff is preparing to install the electrical monitoring devices that will give us a clearer financial picture of the operations of that amenity, and we recommend that any Speedway improvements be deferred until the two thousand and sixteen season concludes, and we can have a clearer picture of the revenues and expenses for that. Should your board approve staff's recommendations and a budget revision, we can collaborate with these groups and return to your board with a recommended course of action. We also want to talk today about inquiries and other interests in the future of the fair, in the fairgrounds. As you're aware, we've already received one well-developed proposal for the future, and as your board directs staff forward, we're prepared to pursue opportunities and review proposals and alternatives. I'd like to turn the presentation over to Ken to explore the vision and steps forward.
Good morning, Chairman, board members. My name's Ken Grimm with the Department of Public Works and Facilities. Mark's talked a little bit about what specifically before you today for what I'll call the short term, what we need, what we can do now to keep the fairgrounds operational. We also want to talk just a few minutes and get your board's concurrence on how we plan on moving forward for the longer term. We've been talking about the fairgrounds for many years. We're hoping that at some point we'll be able to come to a conclusion and, and move forward with a proposal. In early spring of this year, we were hoping to get a new operator on board, and I think the hope was that we could find a private sector partner who would be able to find a way to reinvigorate the fairgrounds itself while at the same time allowing themselves to make a profit. And I think what we found is we didn't get many takers to be able to take that existing facility and make that happen. And I think there's many reasons for that. I, I think part of what we heard is it's the condition of the facility, its current condition. It's about the operations, what's going on there today, and what's, what a new operator or a, or a private operator would need to do to make it into something that they think they can- it into something that they think they can make money off of. And then also, to an extent, it's the uncertainty to even the types of events that can be allowed on the fairgrounds. There have been some issues in the past about what types of events could be there. So, how we are proposing to move forward for here, longer term, and moving from here, we will still continue to evaluate any hard proposals that come in from anybody who is willing to partner with us. We will continue to evaluate those, bring those to your board for those that we believe have merit for your consideration. But from this point, trying to keep control of the process and moving forward, we're talking about working with our Fairgrounds Revitalization Committee and various stakeholders. First off, we wanted to start by identifying the various alternatives that are available for the full breadth of the alternatives that are available for the fairgrounds. Everything from potentially closing the fairgrounds, I don't think anyone has said that's a good idea. I'm not proposing that, but that is part of the full breadth. But as well as looking at continuing the fairground operations at the current site, as well as looking at sites, a relocated site somewhere else within the county. Once we're able to develop those alternatives, we would work to collect information. We'll work then, working with the Fairgrounds Revitalization Committee to evaluate those alternatives, with the intent of eventually coming back to your board with a recommendation and all that information. Hopefully, that will help you feel more comfortable making a long-term decision for the fairgrounds. If your board concurs with that process, we would also encourage you to, if there are alternatives you want to make sure that we put into that process, that they get included and that are evaluated, we would welcome that. But that is, again, with your concurrence, how we plan on moving forward. And joining us today, we have Lisa Worthington. She is the chair, I think the current chair of our Fairgrounds Revitalization Committee, to talk a few minutes from their perspective about where we're at today and where they see us going.
Great.
And I'm actually the vice chair of the Placer County Fairgrounds Revitalization Committee. Our chair had to step down for personal reasons, so I'm honored to represent the FRC, and I'd like to recognize two members that are here also with me. Madeline Miller, she represents District One, and Lee Bastian, he's an at-large member. Anyone else? Nope. So, we have a vigorous and diverse 11-member committee. We've had a quorum at every meeting. They've been very well facilitated by Mark Rideout, and we continue to meet on a monthly basis for a new purpose. As you know, the FRC kicked off in January of 2015. Over the past 11 months, we had an initial mission to develop an RFP and make a recommendation to the county, as Ken mentioned, on a new operator that would serve on an interim term and provide an operation of the fairgrounds that was profitable. We also expected that new operator that did not materialize to invest in the county property and handle deferred maintenance and upgrades to the facilities. The FRC also benefited from invited technical experts such as Rick Pickering, the CEO of the California State Fair, and Stephen Chambers of the Western Fairs Association, that have deep roots in communities. We learned that fairgrounds and the fair event itself provide communities with identity and exemplify historical values. We also recognize that fair properties are physical assets that must have a regular investment in capital to remain safe, inviting, and relevant to the growing county population. The FRC would like to stay intact and continue to serve at the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors. As you know, we serve pro bono, but we'd like a new role with two responsibilities that were briefly mentioned by Mark and Ken. We propose to meet every other month rather than monthly, starting in January 2016, to provide oversight of the Placer County Fair Association or a new operator that may materialize, to review the quarterly financial balance sheet of the Placer County Fair Association, and give advice on the priority list of improvements. We would also like to develop an analysis of alternatives for the long-term solution and needs of the county. We would request vigorous input from the community in doing so through the public process, public input process. And that concludes the presentation of the Fairgrounds Revitalization Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional staff comments prior to?
No, the Fair Association representatives are here as well.
And no other staff comments, but perhaps an opportunity for the PCFA Fairgrounds Association to also speak.
Yeah. No, I see Mr. Henry back there. I'd ask, and then Greg, if you have anything else you want to add. Why don't you gentlemen go ahead and step on forward? Please identify yourself for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm David Henry. I'm the president of the Placer County Fair Association. I'm here today to urge you to move approval of items two, three, and four under this agenda item. Our board has already voted to move approval, our board of directors move approval of items two and three, and I have signed the documents affirming that. We look forward to working with Mr. Rideout in the future and with the FRC. I'm a member of the FRC, and what I have seen in the last year with the FRC is I've seen their knowledge base grew immensely about the fair and its impact in the community and what it can do. And what the board of directors is looking to do upon approval of this, I'm looking forward to working with the city of Roseville. There has been some tension between the county and the city and the Fair Association in past years. I want to get to the head of that and get through it and bring the city onboard in cooperation with the county and with the FRC and facility services to make this a benefit to everybody. We have over 200,000 people a year use our facilities. It's something that, I think it's been neglected in the past. It's, there's plenty of fault to go around, but it's something that can be approved upon in the future. And again, the more prospered is, the less county funds that have to go into it. Yes, the buildings need to be upgraded. Some facilities need to be upgraded. The FRC has come up with some interesting ideas to be passed on to our board of directors to consider. The current manager, Mr. Hagwer, has come up with some interesting ideas that I think the facility staff and the board need to consider. All will improve the fairgrounds and its ability to serve the people of Placer County. And so with that, I'm urging your approval of those items today.
Thank you, Dave. And a question for you, Dave. As both the president of the Fair Association as well as a member of the FRC, do you concur with the request for the expansion of scope of the FRC to serve kind of as an oversight on the quarterly financials as well as taking a role in site location, new facility utilization, that kind of stuff?
Certainly. We have always accepted any help that the community or the county wants to give us. We're not beyond taking any of that kind of assistance.
Okay.
So, on behalf of the board of directors of the Fair Association, we're willing to work and consider any and all possibilities and proposals.
Great. Thank you for that. Any other questions for Dave while we have him before I ask Greg to come up? Nope. Okay.
Actually, I just had a comment.
Oh, sorry.
No, I just wanted to thank you for your activities. I know we had some discussions with the Fair Association during the most recent racing event that came up, and I was very, very pleased to see your interest in wanting to make sure that whatever permitting that went out there was done properly. And you guys worked really well with our building department to make that happen. So, you guys are stepping out in the right direction. Also, with regards to your desire to make better relations, I know I've met with the city manager. I'm not going to speak on behalf of the city, but I do believe in those discussions that there's some opportunities there that need to be fleshed out. It could be a benefit to everybody, so.
Well, and that's my opinion. I think we're an unrecognized jewel in the middle of the city of Roseville. We're 60-plus acres that can benefit the citizens of Roseville as well as the citizens of Placer County. And I don't think that's been taken advantage of in the past. And I think it's, you know, there's been past incidents that have soured relationships between the city and the Fair Association, and I want to get past that. I want to open a new page and a new book and make this a fair for everyone, not just the Placer County Fair in the city of Roseville, but for everyone.
Good. And whatever assistance my office can provide, just ask.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then Greg, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Yuler and Supervisors. I'm just grateful. I started in February.
For the record, if you would, please identify.
Oh, I'm sorry. Greg Hagwer, General Manager, Placer County Fairgrounds.
Thank you.
And you have the address. I started in February of this year, about a month after the revitalization committee got started. Started attending and really was impressed by the interest, but also a little nervous because of the lack of knowledge that was going on. At the same time, I started working with Mark Rideout and his staff, Dick, well, I guess Ken's not really Mark's staff. Lori also. And really, over nine months now, I was only supposed to be there six, we developed a really, really good working relationship. I've seen, I've seen a lot of education on my part and my board's part in relationship with the city of Roseville and the county of Placer, and I wish to thank the committee. Lisa, everybody on the committee has become very, very active, very involved, and I think very knowledgeable in fairs. The interesting thing about the fairgrounds, I've been doing a little bit of research, and I don't want to go back into much history, but in the early '30s, when the association was established as a corporation, they actually were the ones that purchased the property and then shortly thereafter deeded it over to the county for the, you know, the security of the fairgrounds. In that time, also about 25 acres of the 70, originally 75 acres, have been leased out to the SPCA, different city agencies, the California National Guard, which are all good uses for a fairgrounds. When I was managing at Auburn, we had the National Guard there also. That's what a fairgrounds is. It's a variety of different entities. Since about 1936, 33, the state of California was very active in providing assets for capital improvements on the fairgrounds, the big buildings, Johnson Jones, Loopy Hall. The infrastructure, all that was pretty much monies generated by the state through paramutual horse racing, which has radically declined. 2009, boom, it all went away. The fair has pretty much, the association has pretty much kind of limped along since then. I'm thoroughly excited to hear about the county's participation, because when I think about it, in fact, I kind of pointed it out to Ken, the fairgrounds doesn't belong to the association. The fairgrounds belongs to the county. So, anything that this county can do is investing back into their own asset. And I really, really appreciate the, you know, the time, the energy involved. I understand what you guys go through with a vast amount of other important areas, but the fairgrounds is a legacy. It is something that's, you know, viable to the community and a real asset, especially to the agricultural community and the youth. We're also looking at some exciting things. I would like to eventually bring up Maura Rowe, which I'm sure most of you are acquainted with her. She has some great ideas about developing some things, but also I'm looking down the road at new entries, things like selfies and personal-made videos and scavenger hunts along with digital art. The fairgrounds has to be progressive, has to grow into what the youth is involved in today, and we've become more and more urban, although we do have a sizable population outside of Roseville that participates agricultural-wise, and that's our main thing. And with that being said, although Ken pointed out that we do receive $25,000 a year from the county as kind of an allocation to help support the fair as a sponsorship or whatever, that's been going on for some time, and we really appreciate it. However, it's been about 25, or 20, 25 years that we've been getting that $25,000, and inflation's really hit us hard. So, in the future, I might want to request some additional funds for operations. If it would be all right, I'd like to introduce Maura Rowe from the Placer County Tourist Bureau.
What I'm going to do is open it up for public comment, and I think that would be the appropriate time to have that conversation.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that those.
Do you have any questions for Greg?
Those entities that were referenced in this agreement had an opportunity to speak, and you're one of them, so that's why I wanted you up here. Board members have any questions of Greg prior to us opening up a public hearing? I don't see any right now. Thank you, Greg. Okay. Prior to the board taking any action on this item, are there any members of the public that would like to address the board on this item? This will be the time to stand up and come on up.
Everyone. So, my name's Maura Rowe. I'm with the Placer County Visitors Bureau. I was contacted by Karen Fish from Fish Club Lands. She also used to work for Visit California. She contacted me and asked if I could participate in helping the new director and give some new ideas on how we could revitalize the fair. The Visitors Bureau invested a little under $5,000 last year in just trying to support the Placer County Fair, get locals to participate. We decorated the entire garden room. We also took over Loopy Hall and brought in all of our nonprofit organizations that could showcase some of the assets that we have in Placer County. We realized that the fair has kind of lost relevance in the community, and there has not been a lot of work with the city, so there weren't a lot of people that pay attention besides the nuisance that a lot of people think it is. We feel there is a great opportunity around agriculture with urban sprawl. There's a lot of acreage there, lots of schools around the area with kids that don't have access on open space, green space. We did contact the Placer County Farm Bureau, RCD. I think there's a lot of community organizations that could work with us, the city as well. I did speak to Carol Garcia about what would it look like if we built some kind or, you know, started an urban land or urban ag institute where kids, people with disabilities that may have difficulty going out to the farms, could access plots of land there, and we could teach them not only livestock, raising animals, but also gardening. There was also some discussion of growing hops for the local breweries. So, I think there's lots of opportunity there. I think the disappointing part was that so many people haven't paid attention to it for so long that we're kind of coming in at like, wow, everybody's already kind of closing the doors on it, and we didn't get involved soon enough. And so, we, as an organization, would like to participate. We'd like to bring on all of our partners that we work with, see if we can develop a plan if there is opportunity to promote agriculture. That would be our priority. The Placer County or Placer Valley Tourism brings in their focuses on youth sports. The downtown Roseville organizations are always trying to figure out how to drive people downtown. I think this is a way to drive tourism to downtown Roseville. It stays true to their legacy. I think there's some other opportunity around transportation. They have a little bit of train there, so transportation, ag, and then, of course, technology. And I think if we could bring in those sectors and our partners, we might be able to do something. The Placer County Farm Bureau is really excited about it, and Carol Garcia was really excited to work with us on a plan, and that's it.
That's great. Thank you so much. Any other members of the public want to address the board prior to us taking action on this item? Okay, seeing none. Any questions or comments by board members prior to a vote? Yes, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I wanted to start by saying thank you to Lisa. I know you put in a ton of work, and thank you as well for stepping up. When the chair stepped down, I think that probably wasn't what you signed up for, but I understand you've done a masterful job, so thank you. Saturday night, I was at the Tahoe Cattlemen's, Placer Nevada Cattlewoman's Dinner, and this is just sort of following up on Maura's comments. Probably a half a dozen people came up to me and said, "What's going to happen with the fairgrounds?" And so, I think, you know, although we absolutely do need to grow into today's youth, we have this incredible agricultural heritage here in Placer County that we just cannot lose. And the fairgrounds is such an incredible opportunity. And the fairgrounds is such an incredible opportunity to sort of revitalize that focus on ag and community. And so, I, I would encourage all parties to work together, the city, the Visitors Bureau, the, the other tourism groups in Placer County, to really figure out what can we do with that, because it's an incredible asset, and we don't want to lose it. And so, I, I, you know, I, I think the actions that were being taken today are entirely supportable. I'm, I'm going to vote yes on all three of them, but I just think that, you know, we've got to have a vision that is not just broader and forward-looking, but recognizes and cherishes that agricultural history, and I, I truly believe we can get there.
Great. Other board members' comments prior to Senator Jim, Supervisor.
I just want to thank everybody involved. I'm enthusiastic about what I've heard in the work, the distance who have come over the last year, year and a half. So, as was Supervisor Duran and the rest of my colleagues, don't hesitate to call my office if there's a point or a place and time where I can help out. Thanks.
Yes, Supervisor Holmes.
I just want to thank Mark for your leadership, putting together, herding all the cats on the fairgrounds revitalization committee. And Ms. Worthington, your leadership has been invaluable, keeping the meetings going and providing input and an opportunity for everybody to participate. And so, I just wanted to thank you publicly. And then I will make the motion to approve, oh, and expanding the role of the Fairgrounds Revitalization Committee is included in my motion to approve the action before us.
Second.
Motion, Holmes, I got to give the, the second to Robert. I think he snuck it in there before you, Jennifer.
Click on the drum.
Yeah, he has. Under, under, prior to us taking action, however, staff was looking for something along the lines of direction throughout a couple of different items. I, I saw the list of the capital improvements necessary, and I think you're absolutely headed in the right direction in terms of evaluating those capital improvements against the revenue generating potential associated with improving those facilities. So, let's continue that, and, and don't be shy about coming back to the board with the list that says, okay, here's what we think the spend is, but this is what we think the return will be. And then, you know, when, after my first term on the board concluded back in 96, it wasn't long thereafter that I was appointed to the Fair Association Board of Directors when Norma Santucci stepped off the board. And back then, we were meeting, having conversations about the future of the fair and where will its location ultimately be someday. In 97, we were having those conversations, 98, and so, I, I am encouraging more focused conversation direction on, and recommendations back to the board on. If we are going to leave the Roseville facility with the following activities, then this is our recommendation as far as where we think the county should be looking for a new home for the following activities. Now, it may be the recommendation is a bifurcation of some of the activities. It may be that we continue some functions at the, at the current fairgrounds, but other functions get moved somewhere else. It may be, as was recommended, that you have a, a new function there in terms of agricultural education, and you actually have a, a true educational component associated with it on the current location. I know the city of Roseville is interested in either some educational opportunities on that site or the opportunities for some kind of a visitor conference type of opportunities on that site. Whatever it may be, I've been playing with this issue almost 20 years now. Let's make a decision. Let's, let's get it back to the board, let's move some things forward, and actually start implementing on what the future of the fair is going to be, not just discussing what the future of the fair is going to be. That's my, that's one supervisor's recommendation prior to us taking our vote. So, we do have a motion by Holmes and a second by Wygant. We will have a roll call as there is a budget appropriation here, a budget revision.
Holmes?
Aye.
Duran?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye. All right, thank you. Okay, well, I guess we're done. That's it. All right, we, we, there are two items left. I've, I've asked our Treasury Tax Collector, Ms. Windushausen, if she mind if we took her item after our 1130 timed item. She had no concern with that, so we're going to go ahead and take up the 1130 timed item. The 1130 timed item is a discussion of what is, is, is in common parlance known as the state of Jefferson. I see several of you have heard of it. And, and the idea here today is to really have a conversation that helps educate the Board of Supervisors on what are the merits associated with what is being discussed in terms of dividing the state of California, taking in some of Oregon, what have you, versus the status quo. This is intended to be a conversation with the board where folks are able to share thoughts, hopefully some facts, but thoughts and opinions about the pluses and minuses of California remaining one, or California becoming part of two, or heck, if one guy in the Bay Area had his way, six different states, who knows? But the, the, the point here being, this is not an action item, so no matter how persuasive and eloquent you are, our board's not going to take action on anything today. And number two, this is for information purposes for our board. And so, that being the case, please direct your comments to the board. So, not back and forth to each other, but to the board, and, and, and come at it in a spirit that this board sits here truly wanting to hear what you have to say on the, on the topic of the possibility of, of splitting California in whatever configuration it might ultimately end up being, should it go forward. With that, I invited some of the state of Jefferson representatives, Ms. Rapini, to have 10 minutes for her or her team or her designees, whoever those may be. And then, the folks represented by Keepa California will also have 10 minutes. After that time, we will open it up to public comment. So, who will be stepping forward to speak on behalf?
Carter.
Sir? All right, sir, if you would, please step forward to the podium, or if you want to, if you prefer to sit, go ahead and sit, since you have 10 minutes. If you want to sit, that's fine. And identify yourself for the record, and we look forward to your presentation. The, the folks back in the back will bring your mic up live, so.
Is that, can anybody hear?
It'll, it'll, they'll bring it up for you. Just keep talking.
My, my name is Mark. My name is Mark Baird. I am a former resident of Placer County, as luck would have it, and currently a resident of Siskiyou County. I am a retired 747-400 captain. I was a Vietnam veteran, and I've flown for a military contract airline in five subsequent conflicts. I'm a small business owner in Siskiyou County, as well as a rancher. I'm here today to talk to you about the state of Jefferson. I was struck by one thing when I came in the door this morning, and that was what Alex DeTocqueville said in his book Democracy in America in 1825. And he said that the greatest form of government known to man is the township or the county, because local decisions are made locally with local talent, local wisdom, and they represent local people's interests, and with districts that are small enough so that local people can have not only input, but guide the direction of their elected representative. And when we started this morning, and I've been here all day and just watching government and work in Placer County, it's a good thing to watch, and, and it's been good in all of the 18 or 19 counties that I've given this presentation in so far. But we started with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. And Black's Law defines republic as that entity where sovereignty is placed into the hands of elected representatives. And that's you, and that should be the people who, who run the state of California, but it is not, and it has not been for a long, long time. Representation in the state of California has been diluted to the point that we have none. The northern counties of California, the northern 20 counties, share six state-level representatives. The other 38 counties have 114, and that's why we're here today. We have no representation, and this has ceased to be a republic. State split is not a new thing. Article four, section three of the United States Constitution provides the ability to either add new states to the Union or to separate parts of existing states or adjoining states to form other states. It's legal, it's ethical, it's moral, and it's been done four times in our history. And in fact, the first conversation to separate the state of California into smaller, more representative parts started in 1848, when President Polk said that California is too damn big to govern. In 1861, there were subsequent attempts. In 1861, Andre Pico, a prominent legislator and landowner in Southern California, he put forward a legislative initiative to separate California at the Tehachapi Mountains, and his complaint was that the affluent north is taxing the agrarian south to death. She was on the other foot now, but, but at any rate. And that, that measure passed the entire California Assembly, passed the California Senate, went to the United States Senate, and unfortunately, in 1861, a pretty big event happened. The Civil War started, half of the legislature left, a little less than half, and Pico's measure died in the United States Senate. Article four, section three is very simple. It's a very simple process, not easy, but simple. It simply outlines that when you attempt to form a state from the existing territory of another state or two adjoining states, the state legislature affected must agree by simple majority, and Congress must agree. And so, that's the initiative that we're trying to put forward now. And by the way, as of this morning, we have 12 counties, eight county governments that have signed the declaration and petition to withdraw, and four counties have signed based on signatures of the people alone. So, Jefferson effort now contains 12 counties, and as soon as I leave this chamber, pretty quickly, I'm headed to a multi-county meeting down south of here. So, the idea that representation does not exist in Northern California is not new, and it's not, and it's not something that we can hide from any longer. In Siskiyou County, I'd just like to give you a very, very quick example. In Siskiyou County, we have a place called the Siskiyou Pellet Mill. When I make hay, and I don't time it correctly, and it gets rained on and moldy, I would take that hay to the Siskiyou Pellet Mill. They would add some grain and sweet feed to it, and they would make it into pellets, which my cattle or buffalo, in my case, would find palatable, and they would then eat. The California Environmental Protection Agency went to the Siskiyou Pellet Mill, which, by the way, is in the middle of nowhere, and said, you're making too much dust, you can no longer make pellets. And so, Siskiyou Pellet Mill is closed. The eight people employed there are now unemployed. They still sell bag feeds, but they don't do the majority of the business they, they started to do. And do you know what I do with that hay now? I burn it. And that's what all the ranchers do. So, the dust that EPA stopped at the pellet mill is now smoke that, that is legal, and it goes into the atmosphere. California Fish and Wildlife, Calwild, they call themselves, in Siskiyou County, we call them Calpile. They have programs which have stopped forestry in our county. Our county's forestry receipts from federal receipts alone, federal timber ground alone with the Northwest Forest Plan, past NEPA, past SEQA, so on and so forth, used to supply enough revenue to pay for the entire Public Works Department, the entire Public Instruction Department, and the Sheriff's Department. And by the way, I'm also a Reserve Sheriff's Deputy in Siskiyou County, so I know this is true. In Eldorado County, a gentleman made a statement to their board that in the past, when Eldorado County enjoyed healthy stands management, not, nobody's talking about clear cutting, healthy and responsible resource use, that timber receipts alone, and this guy owned the last remaining mill in Eldorado County. I had never met him, but the board was familiar with him. He said, are you aware that timber receipts alone used to pay for the Public Works Department, the Sheriff's Department in its entirety, and the Public Instruction Department? And they said, yes. And he said, do you know how much we got in timber receipts last year after the spotted owl, the red-legged frog, the yellow-legged frog, and the Yosemite toad? And the one guy laughed, and he said, well, you know, you were part of writing that check. And he said, yes, $86,000. We harvest less than 4% of the annual growth that this, this forest provides in California every single year, and the catastrophic wildfires, I don't think are any secret to this board. 250,000 acres, 1 billion-plus merchantable feet of, of timber burned in Siskiyou County two years ago, contributing untold amounts of carbon dioxide to the environment. We don't have representation. We don't have any at all on the state level. I have spoken to all of our representatives. I've asked them all the same thing. If you have a better idea to restore representation to the rural resource counties of Northern California, tell us what it is. We will drop this right now and help you. And every single one of them has looked me right in the eye and said, I got nothing for you. This is a movement of the people. It is grassroots. We don't even have a membership list, and we have 12 counties that agree with this position. This is a conversation that will take place already. We have enough counties to do that now. We're here as a courtesy to see if Placer County's local government would like a seat at that table. What we have done is we've started a declaration process whereby we have declared to the state that we have no representation. We have petitioned them for a redress of grievance under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution and posed that question. They now have the opportunity to remedy that legislatively through an Article four, section three state split. If they ignore our request, they will create harm in that Article four, section four gives us the right, the guarantee, to a republican form of government in each and every state. If they create that harm and ignore our challenge, we will sue them for lack of representation and dilution of vote. And mind you, California has the worst representative benchmarks in the nation, and we are 400% worse than state number 49, and that is Texas. We have 1 million people per state senator, and we have 1 half million people per state assembly person. No one can adequately do that job. If you divide that up into one phone call per day, per person in each constituency, that guy would have to answer the phone around 6,000 times a day. You cannot adequately represent 1 million people. And in addition to that, the fact that these representative districts are so large, and they have increased over time as a result of three court, court opinions, Baker versus Carr, Gray versus Sanders, and Reynolds versus Sims, and what the court's opinion was, was that as, as time goes by, legislative districts will be supervised by a court-appointed scheme, and those districts will change and enlarge in order that each district's population is more or less equal. And what we're going to challenge is the court's remedy to Reynolds versus Sims. We are going to say that the court should have expanded representation as the decades went by, so that each county would still have some. Now, in California, if we expanded representation so that roughly each county would have some, that would mean one representative for about 30,000 people. That would mean California would have 1,333 assembly people and about, I don't know, 600 senators. So, what we're hoping to do is in the settlement conference, we will approach the state of California, or they will approach us, I'm pretty sure, and we will offer them a solution. Allow us to separate. We are free to form a state where each county has one senator or equal numbers of senators in the state senate, and then each county's population will, will vote for their assembly people according to one, the target of one per 30,000. So, it will be population in the assembly, and counties will enjoy equal representation in the senate, and very quickly, and then I'll close if you allow me the opportunity. We have a Supreme Court opinion that will help us do that. We have case law. That case is Brown versus Thompson, I believe it's 1982 or 84. That case, in the majority opinion states, and I quote, "It is easier to oppress the people of this state or of any state when a county lacks representation than it is when each county has at least one state-level representative." There's the opening to create a state where your county will no longer need a lobbyist. Why would you need a lobbyist when you can call your state senator and say, Mary or Joe, get on this for me? And he says, instead of, I'm sorry, I've got 11 other counties I represent, he says, yes, ma'am, or yes, sir, I'll get right on that. That's what the state of Jefferson represents. We don't intend to chase issues in each and every county. Those are for you to decide, and you're doing a great job. What we intend to do is provide a state government that has the backbone to enable you to do those things more easily, more efficiently, and better, because you will have state representation in the senate itself. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you. Stick around, because there will be questions, but first, is it Ms. Wartenberger? Is that who will be speaking on behalf of the Keepa California group? Is that?
No.
No?
Yeah, that's her.
Sorry?
No, my name is Cindy Elsmore.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I'm the Chair of Keepa California. No, it's understandable confusion.
And, and before you get started, Mr. Baird did go a minute over his allotted 10 minutes, and we'll give you 11 minutes as well.
Okay.
And feel free to proceed.
Okay. I think the clerk got.
Oh, it's right up there.
Oh, good.
And then you.
All right. My name is Cindy Elsmore. I'm the Chair of Keepa California, nonpartisan PAC. I'm the chair of Keepa California, nonpartisan PAC, and I was the treasurer tax collector for Sierra County for 22 years and worked for the county for 30. So I know a little bit about county budgets, and good luck, you guys. County budgeting is complicated, that's for sure. We were formed in April this year to oppose the splitting of the state and also to advocate for rural California issues. Oh, good. So we formed this nonpartisan political action committee, and we would like to advocate also for rural issues. We know that there are problems. Obviously, there are always going to be problems with government, because it's really hard to come up with compromises that everyone is happy with. So, but we're here today to offer research that we have done on the financial situation with the state of Jefferson, and we believe that only through looking at the facts can logical decisions, intelligent decisions be made. In Placer County, to dig right in here, we've looked at the actual revenue from the Franchise Tax Board website for the 2013 calendar year, which is the last year that's available. And in Placer County, you paid a 4.4 progressive tax rate, and the average per capita tax was $1,438. Total state income tax received in Sacramento from Placer County residents was $526 million. In the state of Jefferson's viability model, which they tout as being the reason that Jefferson would be a viable state, they show $1,520 million as revenue for state income tax. And that's because they're using a flat tax rate of 8%, which, as we know, is more difficult for lower-income people to pay. Anyway, to generate that amount of money, which is what makes their model viable, in their opinion, there would have to be a 289% increase in the state income tax. That's partly because they're planning on no corporate taxes, zero corporate taxes. So the people would be, individuals and small businesses would be the people responsible for paying this increase in taxes. So here's my little chart. On the left is the, what Placer residents are paying now. On the right is what would have to be increased in order to meet the viability model from the state of Jefferson. This information is taken from the state Franchise Tax Board and also from the viability model that the state of Jefferson has provided. This probably should be a familiar chart to you. This comes right from your county budget, actual, estimated actuals for 2014, '15. Placer received $154 million from the state to support state or county functions. The other problem, other main problem with the financial viability of Jefferson is the debt repayment schedule. With the 19 counties that would, that they originally targeted, Del Nord is out of this loop now, because they, the citizens voted not to be included. They expect a 0% interest rate on the debt that they would assume from California. And, you know, if Placer County has ever been able to come up with a loan from anyone for 0% interest, you know, I'd like to know about how to get one of those. With brand-new state with unstable income, that would be, that debt would be rated as junk bonds. And even if they had a 5% interest rate for 30 years, the payment would double. That would impact their bottom line considerably. No bondholder is going to accept that deal, obviously, and the debt amount also does not include unfunded liabilities. The other thing is that there is no provision at all for higher education, for community colleges, for the universities we have. Only Humboldt and Chico are four-year colleges, public colleges, in the state of Jefferson footprint. Neither of those counties have shown any interest in joining the state of Jefferson, so you could be left with a situation where you had no university options, no in-state university options. And paying out-of-state tuition means that probably a lot of students are going to be priced out of the market. There's been talk about negotiating with California for in-state tuition, but that's going to be pretty hard for the state of California, what remains of it, to go along with, because as California residents, we now subsidize higher education considerably. So they're not going to be willing to give Jefferson students in-state tuition. Calpers and calsters. Calpers and calsters retirees obviously can live anywhere they want to and still get their retirement checks. That's not the problem here. The problem is the active employees, the employees of Placer County, the teachers. And right now, they are receiving the benefit and getting vested in those retirement systems. But if Placer became part of Jefferson, Jefferson would have to decide whether they wanted to even offer a public retirement system, and whether they wanted to offer benefits that were commensurate with what calsters and calpers provide at this time. If they do not, people need to look after their own interests, and there would likely be an exodus of experienced teachers and educated people in public government to, to what remains of California. And just when you need those people to create a new state is when you would not have them So the representation issue. Now, I am from Sierra County, and I think this is just a really great deal, because for my county, with 3,000 people, we get to have our own state senator. Of course, you guys only get one state senator, too. So my vote is going to count as much as 122 of your residents. It really isn't fair. I believe in one person, one vote. Those are Supreme Court decisions that were made 50 years ago, and the Supreme Court is the third branch of our government and makes the decisions based on what is constitutional. So when Jefferson is set up, if they set it up in this manner to have one state senator per county, they are going to have, they are immediately going to be illegal. And that constitution wouldn't be allowed in the Congress. Congress also has to approve the constitution of the new state. Also, there's been a comment that the LAO analysis, the Legislative Analyst Office, did an analysis of the six-state initiative that has been referred to already here. And there is nowhere where this analysis says that the state of Jefferson would be financially viable. What it does say is that it would require a majority of California voters to approve a consatational amendment to allow the split. Nowhere in the Jefferson proposal is a vote of the people involved. They don't really want people to vote on this. They want three of you to agree to commit all of your citizens to this course of action. There would be a created board of commissioners to guide and negotiate the process of splitting the state. And the quote actually says, "Decisions by appointed commissioners..." I'm sorry. "...and elected leaders would determine how taxes, public spending, and other public policies would change for the new states and their local governments." All those decisions would be made later. There's nothing that says that this would be financially viable right up front. And there are potential court cases that could last for decades. And I know I'm over my time. So I just would ask you that you study the impacts and join us to address rural issues. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Prior to us opening up for public comment, any board members have any questions of either the presenters at this time?
I haven't.
No? Okay. Then we will go ahead and open the public comments. So here's what I would like. I would like to hear from Placer County residents first, folks that reside here in Placer County and have an opinion on this subject one way or the other. I'd like to hear your thoughts on it first, and then if time allows, after we've heard the Placer County residents, we'll open it up to residents of other counties. So if you would, please go ahead and step forward and identify yourself, and each speaker will be given three minutes. So, good morning.
Good morning.
Afternoon. No.
Afternoon.
Sorry.
My name's Steve Baird, Colfax. I want to talk a little bit about the financial presentation from Keepa California. We do use a flat tax of 8% as kind of a benchmark. We only use five tax rates in that model: property tax, state personal income tax, money's return from the federal government, state sales tax, and fuel taxes. So we used 1%, keeping Prop 13 intact. Like I said, 8% for spit, state personal income tax, 88 cents on the dollar returned from the federal government, 8% sales tax, and 53 cents on the gallon for fuel tax. That's what we use as our baseline model. In that arrangement, Placer County would enjoy a revenue of over $4.7 billion. That would easily take care of your $977 million annual budget, plus the $556 million in K through 12 expenditures. The remaining $2.977 billion would go to fund what the state used to perform and the cities within Placer County. So you would have a budget equivalent to the state of Jefferson itself. How is that possible? We obviously have the largest population in the state of Jefferson at 366,000, plus we also enjoy one of the higher per capita income streams as well. And so that's where we get the funding for this. There may be some complaints, "Well, Placer's going to, you know, basically fund Jefferson." Well, it just funds it on a per capita basis, so if we're going to have roughly 20% of the population of Jefferson, then we will have one senator and probably up to 12 assembly taking up 20% of that body. So we will be represented for the dollars that we're going to be spending. So it is viable, based on that baseline that we have. The state would operate on $2.9 billion and would have, with the 24 counties, about $8.2 billion in surplus to handle the state functions that they used to perform and for the incorporated cities within each of those counties. It is a great opportunity to enjoy liberty once again. And I noticed, by looking around the room, I don't know if anybody else caught it, but your county flag is actually higher than the state flag over here. And that's actually the way it should be. The counties should be supreme in a state. The state has to be an interceder between the federal government and the counties. The lion's share, based on the finances we provide, goes to the counties, and in doing so, the counties will have the lion's share of the power, not the state's. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then, folks that are interested in speaking, why don't you line up down the center aisle over here? That makes it a little easier than trying to come out from the sides there. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Supervisory Board. My name's Charles Brown from Roseville, California. I'm retired military, recently retired from another job back in Washington, DC. I have made a conscious effort to live here in California because of the quality of life, and more importantly, to live in Roseville, Placer County, because of the quality here. I believe the state of Jefferson has one valid point, which is the concern over representation. I would like to see the state legislature perhaps increased in size so that a legislator represents fewer people. Beyond that, I'd like to see things left the way they are. We have, in the early founding of our country, the Articles of Confederation were tried with "More power to the states." Didn't work, came back, had our constitution giving more power to the central government that has carried over to our state governments, having a little more power over the counties. For the counties to function properly, take Placer County as an example, we have one district which represents the majority of land in Placer County, while the other districts have the population proportional. Somehow, you folks have been able to come together and make this work for the good of the county. This is what we need for the state, rather than split off and create more problems. I wish to see California remain one state and work the way our county supervisors work, where, yes, some representatives, some supervisors represent a larger area of land, some of you represent the urban areas, yet you're able to come together for the good of the county. That's what our state government needs to do, and it needs to stay the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Also want to let folks know, because I do see some of you recording, everything that goes on here in these chambers is recorded. It will all be available online. Typically, our staff has it up within a day or two of the hearing. Go ahead and sit forward, ma'am. So this is all available to you online for your viewing pleasure later, if you, you know, miss something as it happens live. Go ahead.
My name is Nancy Telcock. I live in Rockland, which is in Placer County, but I have family who lives elsewhere. The newest member of my family was born yesterday, and he lives in Yolo County. So they're scattered all over the state. One thing I did do as a teacher when I was teaching was teach social studies, which is government. And one of the things that the students learned very quickly is it isn't controlled by one person. In student government, they quickly found out that even though they were elected president, that didn't mean they could boss everybody else around. And the same thing's going to happen with the way that the state of Jefferson appears to be wanting to do it. It's like a Venn diagram. One part would be law, another part would be health, another part would be education, but they all intersect, and no one thing does the control of the whole business. The same thing goes with, who's going to pay for the janitor who comes in and does the meals in the jails? Who's going to drive the school buses? There are many, many components of every, every bit of government, and I haven't seen much presented by the state of Jefferson. So I think we're going to be like a loose ship without the rudder, just floating around in circles. So please, let's stay the way we are right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Glenda Wertenberger, and I'm from Roseville. I've lived there about 35 years now. Rural counties are subsidized and receive education, road services and everything, more than what they, the individuals pay into the state of California. So as Placer County, as the most robust of the counties that they have, I'm hoping that we wouldn't become the giver county. we wouldn't become the giver county for the poorer counties in the budget. Lake Tahoe is one of Placer's greatest assets, in my opinion. I'm kind of worried about the, how Placer County will deal with the lack of regulation, environmental regulation, that would be capable of destroying one of our greatest assets in the most beautiful places. And as a plaintiff, will Placer County be tasked to help pay for the one man, one vote case being brought before the Supreme Court? And property values in the new state without the ability to pay for the public services we expect would be kind of a little bit hard, I think. They would need the services we're used to. I don't want to go without them. I have five children and 14 grandchildren, and most of them live here in Placer County. So I just think we should keep California together. It's stronger that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
You're right. It is afternoon, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
My name is Gerald Perro. I live in Meadow Vista, California. I've lived there for 28 years. I have a more historical perspective to present to you for your consideration, if you will. When the state of California was founded and granted statehood in 1850, the official register of population was 98,000, a little over 98,000 people. Okay? Today, we're close to 39 million people, yet we still only have 120 elected representatives and 10 constitutional officers running this ship. And this ship is starting to go under because we have, there are so many bureaucracies involved between the top end and the bottom end that nobody knows what's going on until, obviously, it becomes an issue and then it becomes public, and then all you have is these opposing opinions, and nobody gets anything done. When I jump on board a cause, I tend to do a lot of research into it, okay? If for no other reason, it's bitten me a couple times by not having my facts straight. One fact that I would throw at anybody here is that if you go to the gas station and buy a roadmap of the United States, cut out the state of California, flip it over, and put it on the East Coast. Now, depending on where you put that California, there could be up to 12 states in that same geographic area with not much more population in the same, in that same area. When California gets to a point where it ignores the people who are in charge of it, which is us, that's when I start coming to a point where something different has to happen. Georgia, North Carolina, and Virginia, all at one time spread from the Atlantic Ocean to the Mississippi River and was subsequently divided because it is management. My background is in public safety and emergency management. Anybody involved with management would understand span of control. That means there can only be so many people under you before you start losing control of everything. And the state of California has far exceeded that span of control. There is nothing in any document I've researched that says the United States is tapped at 50 states. Okay? However, there are plenty provisions on how to make it bigger. That is, that was the beauty of the way they wrote the Constitution. And just real briefly, I just want to show, the Declaration of Independence clearly says that when government is actually causing harm to the people, it is their duty, it is their right to throw it off and form a different government. That's my reason for supporting the state of Jefferson. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jim Johnston. I'm a business owner here, 35 years. Born in Murfrees, California, been around a little while. I've watched the people in Southern California take our mining, our timber, our agriculture, our hay away from us. We have no representation. This isn't about economics at this point. You've got to understand the representation and how you want to be represented in your community, in your state. And with a county level, it's so important to have local representation. We can't let LA run Northern California. They got everything, we got nothing. I think we should split this thing and let them go on their way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Diana Baird from Colfax, California, together with my husband and some of the other committee members of the Placer County State of Jefferson Committee. We have approached each of you individually and had some great conversations, and hopefully we answered your questions prior. What I'm hearing today is, can you please turn it, I like the background that you guys had on there before?
What's that?
Can you?
Oh, there you go.
Thank you. So as I was listening to the topics this morning, you talked a lot about the Sunset Park area, and some of it has a lot of potential for business. The problem is, is no matter where you look, businesses are vacating the premises. And the only way I can see that we can actually bring back businesses is to create a favorable environment, and that is what the state of Jefferson offers. And I hope that you take a look at that information and get yourself encouraged that we can, day one, immediately start bringing in businesses because of having no corporate income tax, no corporate tax. And secondly, if we were able to go with the state of Jefferson and bring in the resources that Steve Baird had mentioned earlier and what is available on the viability statement is that the money's coming in, and I don't know the numbers specifically, but the generality is, is that the sheriff will be able to have the major part of control in his county. Okay? So what I'm saying is, in response to the people that were, that needed some extra regulations, you guys were talking about that. And then Supervisor Duran mentioned, "Well, you know, we can do that with some resources and maybe not. Maybe we should relook at those regulations we want to include on top of what we already have." So with, with the more funds coming in not being sent to the, to the, to the bigger places, I'm sorry, I'm tongue-tied now. With that extra money, you should be able to include some more FTEs. You can have a better representation for the people that, that tend to stoop and live in places where they're not, where they shouldn't be. And finally, I have my thoughts according to what I've heard about the Keepit, California. And what I'm hearing from Keepit, California is doom and gloom. We already are doom and gloom. I, for one, am ready for a change, and I hope that you, as the supervisors, the people that we put in office, will listen to this group, will do your additional research if you haven't already. And I encourage you to please put this before the board one more time for an action item and vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a question for you. You had mentioned that the sheriff, under this proposal, that the sheriff would be making the decisions. Is there still going to be a board of supervisors in the state of Jefferson or no?
Yes, sir.
May I answer that?
Sure.
What Diana is saying is that as far as law enforcement goes, the lion's share of law enforcement in any given county would fall to the sheriff instead of the federal agencies that now invade the county. They operate by memorandum of understanding, and the sheriff is in a much better position to regulate those activities than agencies from the East Coast and from, Lord knows where. So she's talking about with regard to law enforcement only. This board wouldn't change one iota.
Let me ask you this. You know, I heard some comments with regards to state law and SEQA and water. Does federal law apply in the state of Jefferson?
Federal law applies to all states, and so does contract law. Article 1, Section 10 says, "No state can do anything that changes contract law." That calpers, calsters keeps going just the way it was until, by attrition, you have brand-new employees and you offer them a benefit package that protects the employee without breaking the taxpayers' back. We don't propose to change federal law. We don't propose to change your ability to govern at all. What we propose to do is give you a state framework that will have the backbone to stand between you and obtuse federal decisions. That's all.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name's Jenny Rapini, and I live in Placer County in Colfax. And I want to just start by saying, the poorest day of the state of Jefferson will be the last day in the state of California, with the regulations removed, with the lower taxation and better representation. That will be our poorest day is getting out of California. I think that we can all agree that we have a federal government that is run amok. We have no separation of powers on the federal level anymore. It's pretty much done by a monarchy. We have the very same thing happening in California. California is a failed state. We talk about keeping it the same. If you take our federal constitution as it was written and you look at it, how it's interpreted now by the Supreme Court, they don't recognize, there's very little similarity to it. If you take the California constitution as it was written and now as it has been amended over 500 times, it's hardly recognizable anymore. To Keepit, California, let's get it back to where it was then, before Reynolds versus Sims. We say that we want to keep it the same. We want to be on the government dole. We want, we're afraid to do anything because if we do, then the federal dollars won't come into our county anymore. I don't want to be at the mercy of the federal government. That's never what the founders intended. You know, when they used to go hunting years and years ago in the Antarctic for wolves, the way they used to do it is they would slaughter animals and they would drain the blood, and they would put it in cubes and freeze it, but they'd have a dagger in the center of it that they froze. And so when they wanted to get the wolves and hunt them, they would take that out and they'd put the handle of that dagger in the snow or the ice so that it was just the cube of blood that was out there. And the wolves would all pack around that, and they'd lick that blood. And what happens when you lick ice? You go numb. And pretty soon, they would lick so much, they got to the core of that dagger, and it was slicing their tongue, and they bled out. And that is us, where the way we go to the government dole, and we need to get away from that. We need to get back to the republic that our founders handed to us.
Chairman Euler, Distinguished Board. My name's Deborah Jackson. I'm retired law enforcement. I have been in Placer County for 23 years. I came up the hill from Sacramento County, and I never looked back. My reason for supporting the state of Jefferson is simple: personal liberty, having more money in my pocket. If we get the state of Jefferson, I don't have to move out of California because my retirement funds are going to go a lot further. That's something to think about. Placer County is gorgeous. It's beautiful. I don't want to move. But I think in terms, as many people do, about their pocketbook. And I'm not looking for a government handout. I don't want one. I'm looking to be resourceful with the money and the resources that I have. Our taxes are going up and up and up throughout the state of California. We have an unaccounted board that keeps setting regulations called CARB, and we have no say over that. And it does affect our cost of living. It affects our transportation. It affects a lot of things that we do. So I am in support of it because, like I said, I'm a little selfish. I'll speak for myself. I like where I live in Rockland. I like my community. I like my neighbors. But I'm telling you, I'm not going to be able to afford to live here much longer, and I would really like to stay. I appreciate your time, and thank you each and every one of you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Greg Walsh. I live in Colfax. I happen to be a local real estate broker. And to give you an idea of the kind of people I deal with, I've sold over 1,000 homes in Placer County in the last six years. So I talked to a lot of people. The request of two of you board members was you wanted to know what, how the public felt about this. You needed to get out and reach them. I brought you a box with 5,000 signatures of people that are in favor of the state of Jefferson. People that were derogatory towards the state of Jefferson might have been, might have been 1%. And in regard to the nonsense I've heard today, I mean, and the rhetoric and the distractions, you guys, the simplest, the simplest way to describe the state of Jefferson is we're going to take, we're going to, we're going to, it's just like your computer. When it fails you, you restore it to a point in the past when it worked. We're not inventing anything new. We're going back to what worked, what worked for us when we were kids. We had liberty, where we had freedom, where we had jobs, where the free market was available. And you guys all know the free market. I've been self-employed for 45 years. I have not been employed, well, self-employed. But the thing, what we talked about earlier about these subdivisions, these homes and all this stuff going in, you guys, and I could get into real estate and talk to you about for hours of how terrible it is right now because it's frickin' doomed. But in the last seven years, 9,000 small businesses have left California. Where do you think your revenue is coming from? Currently, California spends $28,000 a minute, more than they have coming in. We're going in debt at the rate of $28,000 a minute. I'm not sure if you guys know that. The Keepit, California lady I talked to in a hall didn't know that. The city council member in Colfax didn't know that. People have to wake up to the fact that California is doomed. It's frickin' doomed, you guys. We just have to get back to a republic, formal government that works. My wife could not, would not allow me to tell you what kind of formal government we have in California right now, but it's a failure. And through the history of man, 5,000 years of history of man, it's been known and it never lasts more than 30 years before it implodes. And that's where we're at right now. That's the good news. It's imploding. We can go, "Wow, we got a problem. What do we do to fix it?" Let's restore it to a point in the past where it worked. Let's get back to a republic, formal government. That's what the state of Jefferson will do. You are not going to do that with Jerry Brown. This gentleman here flew Jerry Brown to the, can I tell him this? To the UN conference in 1992. Took 60,000 gallons of fuel each way.
86,000.
86,000 gallons of fuel each way, took him to the UN conference. Jerry Brown stood up in front of these people for a half hour and told them how good Agenda 21 is and, and, can't mention the word. She told me I can't mention the S-word. I mean, that's Jerry Brown. You guys, California is not changing. We can't change it. We've worked on it for a long, long time. If you want to keep in California, adios. I sell real estate. I'd be glad to sell your home if you're leaving. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Chair and the Board. CJ from Roseville, California. I heard both sides. I ran for an office last year. So the point that stuck to my head was six legislators versus 114 legislators down south. So what it takes is to compare what they did as 114 versus what they could not do as a sixth legislator from Northern California. To expand this a little bit more, today, Southern California does not have water. Now, like we say, we don't have enough representation from the Northern California. So lack of representation, lack of water. So if they were to take lack of water as a reason to secede from California, would that be a wise thing to do where the water would come from just because they secede from California? So secession not necessarily would lead to the solution. What it takes is to fight it out. The six legislators from Northern California, we need to understand what they did to change over this past decades to improve the life of the people of this Northern California. I listened to a town hall yesterday about Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. I'm sure some of you are there yesterday. Today, Placer is asking for $3 billion. Part of that would come from a sales tax from Placer County. So largest county, the potential... county, the potential state of Jefferson would inherit, is already, is asking for $3 billion to fix crumbling infrastructure, just the roads and bridges. So now, I envision after 10 years from today, Placer will become a Southern California for the so-called state of Jefferson, because this is going to be a cash cow. The money is going to come from the placer, because that's where the population center is. I recognize we have, we're having difficulties. We're having challenges. We're having grievances. But secession is not the solution. We have to come together and, you know, find the better solution. And thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Ray Thompson. I live here in Auburn. Been a resident for my entire life. I got on board the state of Jefferson movement because of probably primarily the lack of representation that was brought out to me was rather interesting. And then also as a sidebar, locally here, our Board of Supervisors have been a bit reluctant in the past to allow us to come before you. I thank you for allowing that to happen today. And I hope it will happen again in the future. What will happen with the state of Jefferson future down the road is hypothetical. There's a lot of ideas in place. The beauty to me is that we're kind of restarting this thing from ground zero. Regulations, pay scales, right-to-work state, schools, infrastructure, name it all. The funding, the approach to how we repair all this stuff, and where the money comes from, the options are endless as to how we would do this stuff. Businesses moving to Texas, Nevada, Arizona, regulations become more favorable. Next thing you know, those businesses are moving back to the state of Jefferson, thus increasing our economy, increasing the need, the desirability to come back to having the topography and the weather that we enjoy here, but also now coming back to the state of Jefferson because it's more business-friendly. Myself, as far as rules and regulations, I don't keep track of them all the time. I'm self-employed. I own multifamily residential properties. And I know it's chronic that we're getting things all the time from various agencies. Name your agency, we get it. So it's a chronic issue of continuing regulations. In the event that Jefferson could be created, we start at a ground zero. We create our own regulations, taking into account what the federal government gives us already. But there's an opportunity to maybe bring it back to a little more of a benchmark where we can start anew, and benefit possibly the business sector, possibly the citizens of the new state of Jefferson. That's, my summation is why I'm really here, is the opportunity to kind of start over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Eric Kruger. I'm a Native American, born in Southern California. I'm sorry, Native Californian. Born in Southern California and raised there. As soon as I graduated high school, I moved to Northern California. Definitely was more my feel, more my value, more my style. I started Kruger Aviation, and have enjoyed being the president of that corporation for over 30 years. During that 30 years as a business owner in California, I've gone through some very difficult times with overreaching government, and hostile would be a good way for me to put it. I'm currently at the crossroads of whether to dissolve the company, it's not worth the effort, to relocate, and what have you. My wife and I reside in Placer County, have a very small ranch, and enjoy it. The state of Jefferson is a breath of fresh air to a business owner and to a resident, that I love California, but I feel betrayed. And we need that analogy, like they said, we need to reboot and get back to what was working. And I just want to share that as a resident, as a business owner, this holds way more answers to our situation, our future, than holding on to what doesn't work and is out of control. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Russ Carr. I'm a resident of Roseville. Born and raised in Placer County, and I'm almost 46 years old. First, let me start by saying thank you all for your service. This is, this is what government's supposed to be like in, in, in the United States of America. Without going into a whole bunch of just rehashing what everybody else here has said, I do, I would like to say that the reason I support the state of Jefferson, again, I grew up here, my whole family's here, with the exception of two of my adult children, who have had to move out of state. They simply cannot find a way to make a living and to better their lives here. Now, when I went to school, and I was taught about how the civics of the United States work, I was told that my vote counts. When you look at the, the representation model that we have here in California, combined with the, the matter of it being locked down to a certain number of representatives that we have in California by the California Constitution, and then the Reynolds v. Sims, I mean, one man, one vote, that's a, that's a key thing to be an American, is your vote is supposed to count. But we're really restricted with what, what does that mean to a resident of California? What that means is our, our vote is, we're screaming in a vacuum. That's what it means. When I, why do I even show up to the polls? It's, it's an absolute waste of time. It just gets lost in the numbers. Now, with that, state of Jefferson's not some big fantasy. You know, you can look at all the numbers, and they can manipulate them 10 ways to Sunday. But the truth of the matter is, California, depending on whose numbers you want to look at, is either about $845 billion to, I've heard, a trillion four, including the unfunded liabilities that California's debt is. Yeah, you know, the governor stepped up and says, hey, we've got a balanced budget. Well, the budget is what he's looking to do in the future. It's not the past, and it certainly doesn't address that. I'm scared for my future in California, my opportunity for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And I'm afraid for the same here. Now, one last thing I'd like to say, this gentleman has been very kind in bringing the California Republic flag. California is not a true republic. My vote doesn't count. That's why I support state of Jefferson. If there were a way to make it count in California, I'm behind that 100%. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Chairman Euler, members of the board. My name is Sam Toll. I'm a 30-year resident of Loomis, California. Over the past summer, I've attended 15 to 16 different events here in South Placer County. I've spoken to perhaps 10,000 different county residents. I've collected with my team a number of those signatures that you see in the box beside, beside you there. There's been some recurring themes in the conversations that I've had with people in the county. Some people look at me like I've got my hair on fire, and that, that I'm after something that's pretty crazy. Many of the people have never heard of the state of Jefferson, and received information, and took away things that allowed them to do research and look into the matter further. Many of the people that I spoke with who'd never heard of the state of Jefferson, signed the petition. But there's a tremendous number of people who made a beeline to our booth, and without any questions or formal discussion, demanded an opportunity to sign and represent not only themselves, but their children. There were a number of threads of conversation, but I can tell you that I probably spoke to 500 separate people who said to me, in six months, in a year, in a year and a half, in three years, I'm out of here. We're retiring, and we are leaving this state, because the state is un, it is out of control, and appears to be ungoverned. So, these people represent what could be considered the yeoman, working class, middle class of our county. And these people are going to be gone for good. It's because of a lack of leadership in Sacramento. It's because of a lack of direction. You know, again, there's 590 regulatory agencies that fee, tax, license, tell you what you can do, tell you what you can't do, or all of the above. And almost all of them are not elected by any of us, and have, and therefore our voice, as quiet and as perhaps screaming in the vacuum as, as we may be, is simply unheard on their ears. There's a tremendous amount of groundswell and support. People who learn about this movement without knowing anything about it, recognize the merits that it has, and, and consider it to be a solution to the problem. I had the opportunity of meeting Steve Jobs a couple of times. I sat in a couple of different business meetings with him during the course of my professional career. And I was taken by a meeting that he actually threw out a gentleman who, after the second time of raising a complaint, was admonished in some pretty colorful language about not having a solution. He said that at Apple Computers, if you have a complaint and you have a problem, you have to present three well-thought-out solutions to what it is that troubles you. And there have been nothing that could be resembled a solution that's come out of California. On the other hand, the state of Jefferson is an excellent solution to our problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other Placer County residents that want to address the board after this lady? I see somebody else rising here. Okay, go ahead. Please, go ahead.
My name is June Cooper. I'm from Red Buff, California. I hope to be someday the state of Jefferson, but it's in Dama County. Our Board of Supervisors went through this same thing, and they battled it back and forth. It took them a couple of times. They, the decision they came up with was let the people decide, so they didn't think it was going to work. I think they were hoping it wouldn't work. So they threw it at us. You guys get out there and you're going to vote. We'll have the vote. We'll even pay for it. They put it on the ballot for us. They put us on top. They put their raises on the bottom. They figured, wow, we're going to get a raise, and we'll get rid of these people, and we'll be in California. This is wonderful. Well, we fooled them, because we got out there and politicked. You'll be surprised what the people in the community can do when they come together with an idea, and they really want that idea. So we voted it in, and they lost their raise. Now, this coming voting thing, they're going to try it again, but they're going to ask for a little less money. Well, because we're going to go into the state of Jefferson, we hope to give it to them. But if we don't, we're still hoping that the rest of the counties will stick together and come with us, because we're going to go and be the state of Jefferson. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we are almost at an hour on the item here. So, I think with, unless there are any other Placer County residents that want to address the board, I think we will let this young lady here be the, did you rise to speak? Yep. Okay, come on over as well.
I'm a Placer County resident.
All right. I'll allow for one more, then after this, for all the other Placer County residents. That'll take us right to an hour on the item, which is what I promised folks we would, we would give you. So, go ahead.
Good afternoon. I'm Patricia McKinney, and I have lived in Granite Bay. It started out as Roseville.
Now you know why I called her a young lady, huh?
For 35 years now. And I am proud to be a member of the Placer County area, or a resident. Placer County has been a leader in the state for fiscal responsibility, and I'm just proud of that. I just want to urge you, as representatives of the people, us, to please approve this, this petition to go forward. It's no skin off your nose. This is going to be a long, hard process, and I really want to see it go ahead. And I would be extremely proud, as a member of the state of Jefferson, to have Placer County be a part of that. And who knows, I could be looking at a governor, a United States representative, a state senator. So what I'm asking is, please, let's allow this to go forward and to sign the petition. Thank you.
Thank you. And with this lady's comments, that will bring us to the hour that I promised the folks for the item. And so, ma'am, go ahead, and you'll, you'll wrap us up on this.
Hello, I'm Margie Jenk. I live in Lake of the Pines, which is just, actually, 100, actually, where I am is maybe 100 yards over your border. But I also lived in Placer County for 17 years, right down the street from your chair of your Placer County Board of Supervisors, Mr. Euler. Glad to see you.
Thank you.
I don't know if you still recognize me. I look a little different now.
How's Alicia doing?
Fine.
Good.
Um.
Yeah. Yes, she moved because I was her favorite.
Yeah.
She moved.
I could tell you some stories, but I'll let them go.
Yeah.
The, I do, I do believe that the state of Jefferson proponents have, you know, brought to the surface many concerns of rural California, not just Northern California, but there are concerns all up and down this state. If you look at the map, there are concerns in the Central Valley, there are concerns in San Bernardino. I mean, the state is really split between the haves and the have-nots in many ways. And these need to be addressed. I don't think anybody disagrees with that. However, I think we need to pause and have a moment of realism. One of the parts of the Constitution that is read over and over again says the state legislature has to approve this. Well, I can tell you, the state legislature is not going to approve this, not now, and not any time in the near future. However, they have reached out to Keep It California. In fact, Senate Pro Tem Kevin DeLeón drove, came all the way to El Dorado County to have a meeting with some of our leaders. And he has assigned a person on his staff to be a special rural representative. And we have had a chance to meet and talk with him now a number of times. We've also had a chance to talk with some of the legislators from Los Angeles and from San Francisco. And not to say that we made a big dent yet, but we have started. And we would like to ask people who have these needs and these interests, in the meantime, while you're looking for perhaps another state, to join with us. I'd like to reemphasize Cindy's invitation, to join with us in forming an advocacy group. I don't believe there really is an advocacy group outside of the county officers group that we know of, for the whole northern state of California. And I know, in my own life, you know, I'd paid a lot of attention in Nevada County. I paid attention to California, to the United States. But to actually focus on the issues of Northern California probably wouldn't have occurred to me without the state of California people bringing that up. So, again, wouldn't it be quite a sight if we all came to, I understand, if we all went to the state of, uh...
It's a new system. We're trying to figure it out.
I see. Okay. If we all went down and to the legislature together, all with our different T-shirts and buttons on, and we all had a, a issue that we could get together on. In fact, we've chosen one right now. Do you know the state is quite far behind on paying the payment-in-lue payments taxes? And I know RCRC has spent a lot of time trying to get that. How would you like to have a whole bunch of us, Keep It California, State of Jefferson, Republicans, Democrats, legal women voters, join you one day in the Capitol, and see if we can get some of that money back? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenk. Appreciate it. Okay, we are just at the hour that I promised folks that we would devote to having this conversation. Thank you very much to representatives of both sides for a very enlightening conversation. And I'm sure this won't be the end of the conversation in Placer County. So, we'll look forward to seeing folks around as we continue to have, have this discussion and see where this leads us. So with that, thank you all very much. We do have one final agenda item. I'm going to pause. Let folks, who've been here a long time, go ahead and make their exit before we get on to our last agenda item.
We're in. Justice, Justice, Justice.
Okay, folks, we do have some more items to conclude here. So if I could ask you to take your conversations outside, we'll be able to wrap up the business of the board.
We worked hard for these. Would you like to touch them? We worked hard.
Well, if you want to turn them in, that's fine. Otherwise, you can go ahead and take them with you and save them for one...
We'll bring them back because we're going to... I collected 367 last night.
Sounds good.
We're on a roll.
Good.
We'll bring back 60,000.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Okay, our final agendized item prior to adjourning to a closed session is a discussion regarding our Empower program. Ms. Wenda Zousen is here to present. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will do my best to move this along. I know I'm the only thing standing between you and your lunch at this point.
County councilors.
Oh, okay. Just to start things off, first, let me tell you I have a couple of staff members here. Kimberly Hawley, Chief Deputy Treasurer. Alexia Ritalik, she is our new Marketing and Government Affairs Manager for the Empower program. And where's... Oh, there's Eric Wademan, Assistant Treasurer, Tax Collector. Just a quick reminder, on the program policy goals for Empower are to create jobs, decrease water and energy consumption, decrease utility costs for business and homeowners, increase energy independence, and to improve the environment. So a number of actions before you today. First of all, to hear a presentation and a program update, and then to adopt a resolution related to support of the Empower program and its exclusive right to offer a PACE program in Placer County. Also, to consider some items related to expansion of the program beyond Placer County jurisdiction that has to do with staffing and associated costs with staffing. And then also, a couple of changes, more of an administrative nature to the program report, and then also a contract increase that has directly to do with the volume of applications that we are processing. So by way of program performance, we have now funded nearing $40 million in Placer County in terms of energy efficiency, renewable generation, and water conservation measures. We have funded over 1,000 residential projects and 14 commercial projects. We have 307 participating contractors. And when I say participating contractors, I don't mean just signed up to work with the program. These are contractors who have either already been paid or have a customer with a pending application. And we use methodology from the American Council for an Energy Efficient Economy for Job Creation numbers related to that investment in the local community. So by that calculation, 714 jobs directly created from the installation of these improvements, and then another 648 generated from the increase in business profit and household disposable income from the energy utility and utility savings. The amount of annual solar production that's been financed through this program is 10,000 annual kilowatt-hours, and then the estimated savings is, excuse me, million, 10 million, and on energy savings, over 11, almost 12 million kilowatt-hours. Our calculations also show the greenhouse gas emission reductions are the equivalent of taking almost 500 cars off the road. So your board, in order to provide the financing through this program, has authorized the issuance of 100 million in bonds. Excuse the... Earlier on, there was a $37 million figure on bonds issued, 35 million. We're issuing about $1 million a month, a million to a million five. So depending upon where I captured the numbers, there's where your discrepancy is. So we have about 25 million that is owned by the Treasury and 10 million which were sold to Five Star Bank, a local community bank. So initial investment by the Treasury and then sold to a local community bank, further making a reinvestment, if you will, in the local economy. I also would like to mention that we continue to have discussions with several other very serious investors in the program. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So this is what the... How the volume plays out in terms of the program. We've had about a 42% increase for 158 applications over the prior calendar year in terms of number of applications that we've received. And in terms of dollars, this graph shows the actual distribution of dollars on a monthly basis that have been dispersed ultimately to contractors through property owners making these improvements. So we have about a 38% increase over the prior year. And this is just for Placer County alone, these numbers. So in 2015, 15.7 million so far. With regard to the program finances, we closed the year with 600,000 in net income. We are still trying to burn down a negative fund balance that was generated during the residential suspension. Part of the reason that that number is so large has to do with a rollover of encumbrances. But what I want to point out here is that the program makes 2% on all the bonds that are held in the Treasury. We also make a little bit on, for example, the Five Star Bonds. The margin is a little bit lower because the amount of interest accruing to Five Star Bank from the deal that was negotiated there is closer to 1%. So we make 2% on what is held in the Treasury. So given what we hold now, we're earning about $550,000. What that does with adding to the financing, a million to a million and a half a month, and then depending upon what we sell, it creates a revenue lever for us to help stabilize the revenues in the program. So even though we have those investors who are eager to buy more of our bonds, we're going to continue to hold on to them to create this revenue buffer for the program, and we will be adding to that balance. And at some point in the future, we'll then look at having those investors take out the bonds that are held by the Treasury. So we continue to take a conservative approach. These numbers are based on a conservative approach to budgeting and also a conservative approach to staffing. Talk a little bit more about staffing in just a moment. External to the county, California created the PACE Loss Reserve in order to make mortgage lenders whole should they experience a loss. So as of June 30th of this year, CAATFA, California Alternative Energy and Advanced Transportation Finance Authority, who's managed by staff in the State Treasurer's Office, reported that over 750,000... 750 million, excuse me, 750 million assessments were outstanding throughout California through, not just Empower, of course, but other programs active in the state of California. They have not had any claims to date. And so that's been operating for over a year now. However, FHFA continues to not recognize that program as being sufficient to alleviate their concerns, although I do think it's an important program and it does provide an important safeguard. They have not changed their position relative to PACE. One of the trends that we have noticed just in about the last 60 days, maybe a little bit more, is that particularly during a sale transaction, mortgage lenders are requiring the PACE lien to be paid off. We believe that, although we haven't seen anything in terms of a formal statement out of FHFA, we think that they're kind of tapping lenders on the shoulder and saying, remember, we won't buy or guarantee any loans where there's a PACE lien on the property. And so some stakeholders or other programs in working towards a solution, they are working with FHFA, the Federal Housing Administration, not to be confused with FHFA, the Federal Housing Finance Agency. And what they are... What they're looking to do is to, in those transactions, is to offer the buyer's lender an agreement where they will not foreclose on a defaulted assessment without that lender's permission. So they're deferring foreclosure on delinquencies. However, it does not recognize the fact that if there are other assessments which are also delinquent with that, so for example, if you have a city that has a Melrose, they can move towards foreclosure and you still, you know, you have collateral damage, so to speak, through that foreclosure. It also does not acknowledge the fact that the tax collector cannot abide by that under state law, that agreement, and will move forward in between the fifth and the seventh year to sell that property at tax-definished land sale. So I'm... It's going to be interesting to see how this plays out, how many banks are willing to accept this, and ultimately whether there is any success in getting the Federal Housing Finance Agency, FHFA, to agree that this is a helpful solution. What we have done in Empower as a practical matter is that we have revised in our seminars and in our conversations with property owners that, from a practical standpoint, it is likely that if they sell the property or refinance, a new lender is going to require the PACE lien to be paid off. So we have moved from language that says you may be required to do this to say there is a significant likelihood, almost certainty. One of the things that we'd also like to do, and which is an action item for your board, and I'll speak more about it in a moment, is that in the first five years of if there is prepayment of the assessment, either pay down or pay off, we currently have a prepayment premium that needs to be paid, and we'd like to do away with that. It... I think there's a sense that it kind of adds insult to injury, if you will. So talking about program expansion, then I'll circle back to all of these issues as action items. In 2013, the board took formal action to authorize and direct the expansion of the program. I'll remind that in 2009, when we originally proposed the program, expansion was discussed at that time. And in fact, we had a representative from Nevada County who said, we are hoping that you will expand this program because we'd like to take advantage of it. Financially, we're not sure if it pencils for us to do this on our own. So in 2014, after that, we expanded to the city of Folsom, and we have been operating in the city of Folsom. And then in September, your board and the Colfax City Council agreed to form a joint powers authority, the Sierra Valley Energy Authority, under which to operate the program. When we expanded to Folsom, we set up a new program for them. By going to this JPA format, then all we have to do is have a jurisdiction who wants to join pass a resolution, and then we can offer the program. So it's much more cost-effective, much more efficient, much less time to move that, to go forward. The other issue is that, under the current Finance Authority, JPA, of which the former, the successor agency is a member, that if we continue to issue bonds, we'll be issuing bonds for which there will be no issuing authority because when the successor agency dissolves, that JPA will dissolve. So it solves that problem also. With our Marketing and Government Affairs Manager onboard, we have a draft marketing plan I'm very pleased with, be glad to share with you, and that draft outline we're beginning to flesh out and move forward on. We have continued interest by other jurisdictions to expand the program. In September, we responded to a request for proposals from Nevada County, and we were selected to be the sole provider for Nevada County. And they have also indicated that the cities of Grass Valley, Nevada City, and Truckee also want to join along with the county of Nevada. So they will be taking formal action by passing a resolution to become an associate member, non-voting associate member of the JPA. My understanding is on the 8th of December is when they're looking at taking that action to their board. But the RFP process was discussed by their board, and their board gave direction to move forward with Empower. So comparing our program to other programs, in your attachments, you have a very robust comparison that was actually prepared by Sacramento County and Sonoma County, which has what's referred to as an open marketplace where they have multiple providers, also reviewed that and commented on it. So there's... That was really compiled by others. We just provided input on the Empower portion. So there's a degree of independence in that analysis. As directed by this board, we have very strong consumer protection. Every property owner must go through a seminar. It takes almost two hours with questions and answers where we tell about the program, how it works, we provide disclosures, we talk about dealing with a contractor, we talk about what kind of energy efficiency should be done first in order to get the greatest return on those invested dollars in improvements. We also have a dynamic contractor review. It's not a one-time thing where the contractor... We review the contractor and the state contractor's license board, and, okay, you're in. Every time we check their application that we're processing, every time we're processing an application, we go back and check to make sure that that license continues to be in good standing and those types of things are in order. We have a very, very low level of complaints. We're just... They're almost virtually none, and I'm... We're going to start actually documenting that to show it's so low. And then, one of the things that I... The points that I'd like to make is it takes us, once we have a complete application, about three to five days to process that application and give an approval. And then we go to contract signing. There's a three-day cooling-off period, and then the contractor can make the improvements, and then we make payment after we have building inspection clearance. Where our applications can take a long time is if they sit in the queue before we can even pick up the file once we have an application. And we know from experience, that has gone from around a week to as much as 21 working days at one point when we did not have sufficient staff, and we lose business. Contractors just... They just can't depend on the program when we're in that situation. And then the other point that I want to make in terms of consumer protection is that we do not provide a prequalification. There is a service that we can use where, when the contractor's sitting with the property owner, they can... The other programs use this service where basically they can find... find out the available equity. We prefer to have the contractors bid first before everybody knows what the available equity is. We think that that's a consumer protection measure that's important to keep in place. One of the things that I want to point out here is that not only is our interest rate low, our cost of funds are low, and that's why we can, we can offer this low of an interest rate, but our competitors also charge a closing fee. We did this calculation based on the average residential project that we see of $29,000. So one of the things that we are doing is we are doing an analysis and a review of our own program fee. We can triple it before we come close to our next competitor, if you will. We are looking at what, at adjusting that, and we'll come back to the board. And what we're trying to do there is instead of having to earn that 2% interest which comes in over time, align receipt of revenues with the time of expenditure. So we're in the process of doing that review right now. Getting back to the prepayment premium, the prepayment, prepayment, whoops, the prepayment premium starts out at 5%, and it declines until it's exhausted at the end of the fifth year. We are the only program that does not waive. All programs have a prepayment premium, but all of them have been waiving that prepayment premium for residential. One of the programs does charge a prepayment premium, but they offer the property owner a higher interest rate if they want to avoid a future prepayment premium. As I mentioned before, it complicates a refinancing or a sale, and the amount that we're talking about is very, very small. We have had 35 prepayments. The revenue associated with that or the total prepayment premiums, $45,000. So to the program, it's not a significant revenue source, and that's on a million dollars worth of principal pay down. So what we're asking for is to be able to waive that and then use our best efforts to actually refund where it's been paid before. Those are subject to escrows that, you know, we'll do our best to identify who paid the prepayment premium and where the payer is in order to make a refund if your board approves that. On our non-residential side, things are pretty robust. We have quite a few applications that are pending. We have eight that are beyond pending, if you will. They are actually, have been approved, and they total $7.5 million. So once those projects, they're under construction right now, once they're complete and we pay out, we will have a total of 11.5 million, over 11.5 million in non-residential projects So in order to accommodate the growth right here in the demand, right here in Placer County, and then also the expansion of the program, we do need additional staff resources. We would like to have that application processing time so that it doesn't take ever more than a week before we can start processing an application. And so we are asking for a number of positions to be allocated, and the reason for that allocation, even though we are not asking for funding for all of those positions, is that the process takes a minimum of 60 days, practically speaking, more like 90-plus days in order to have new positions allocated and then to be able to do the recruitment and fill them. If we've got a lag in the processing of applications, that's where we start losing business. So if the positions are already allocated, then the process is 30 days or less to come back to the board to act, ask for funding of those positions. So we would still be coming back to the board and working with the county executive's office on future funding of those positions. So our current staffing is one senior program specialist, three program specialists, one, two. We also have one part-time extra help. That is how we have staffed this program, is by hiring employees, part-time, extra help, and then when we can really justify transitioning them to permanent full-time, we do that. We also have two student interns working in the program currently, and that's, that has worked really well for us. So the proposed staffing of, in terms of the position allocation that you're being asked to approve today would be for two program specialist senior, excuse me, that should be one program specialist senior. That's what's in your memo, is one program specialist senior, six program specialists, one, two, and one accountant auditor, and then a budget revision of $27,906 to fund two program specialists and one accountant auditor now. So we will use some salary savings. We have a program manager position that has allocated the program that we have not yet filled, so we have some budget savings, and we can offset some of this position cost through that budget savings. With regard to the program report, I already mentioned the waiver of the prepayment premium. The specific language on the program report is that assessments are subject to a prepayment premium as stated in the assessment contract. It's not actually in the program report. It, the, the assessment contract is an attachment to the program report, and that the board has given the treasure tax collector the authority to refund the, excuse me, to waive or refund the prepayment premium. The other change that we would like to make to the program report is that currently the property taxes must have been current for the last three years or the length of property ownership, whichever time period is shorter, and we would like to make an exception for property, for, excuse me, for supplemental property taxes. Supplemental property taxes, we know, have a higher delinquency rate. They're very confusing. They're, property taxes don't work like consumer credit where you pay off a bill, you charge more, you, you know, your payment gets adjusted. You pay based on the old value. If you make an improvement or you change ownership, you're paying based on the old property owner's value at first, and then when the assessment is changed, then a supplemental bill comes out for the difference. Often, people get confused because they think their mortgage lender is paying it, and so we've seen, we just think that people are getting caught up, not because of ability to pay, but because of confusion and because it, that it's off-cycle from the regular billing process. So we'd like to make an exception in the case of supplemental property tax bills being delinquent or default where a taxpayer is otherwise, has been in good standing. And so with that, I'm asking for your approval of the items that, that I mentioned initially and that I have gone over, and I'd be glad to take your questions at this point.
Board members, any questions?
Yeah, real quickly, thanks for bringing this forward. I did have, I gave a comment earlier today, a report with regards to the Sierra College Energy 2001 program, and I did happen to talk to Ms. Rasmussen, who owns the business, and include her in that it would, it would have been possible for her to possibly put in that 11 kilowatt under your program, and she'll be contacting you later about that. But I did want to offer up the possibility, if you need further assistance, you know, college students or whatever, you know, I think it would be really neat to have those, some of those folks maybe that installed it and designed it may be interested in working on how to do the sales for this, to kind of make it a continuum of, of the program. So that's something that I can put you into contact with the teacher and the, and the dean at Sierra College to maybe facilitate that if you want to.
That, that would be great, and in fact, that's one of the things that, now that Alexia is on board, we're following up on is other stakeholders. There's a nonprofit called Grid Alternatives that installs solar systems for low, and low-income households. We're looking for ways to partner them, leverage our relationship in mutually beneficial ways, so that's, that is great, especially now that we have the ability to follow up.
And in my monthly article that I write for the Wood Creek News, I highlighted your, you and the program, so hopefully you'll get some additional business.
Good to know, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Montgomery.
I just really want to say thank you. Over the years, you've put an incredible amount of effort into this program, and it was fantastic to be up at Gran Lebocque and, and see a non-residential project that was just absolutely incredible, and, and to hear from someone who is sometimes one of our greatest critics, what a terrific program it was, and how important he thinks it is not just to his business, but, but to the Tahoe Basin and the community. And so thank you for your persistence, thank you for coming back to us both with these updates and these revisions to the program. I think we're an absolute leader in the state in these pace programs, and frankly, it's down to you, so thank you.
Welcome.
That sounded like a motion to me.
That was a motion. Two, three, four, five, and six.
Second.
Motion, Montgomery, second, Wygant. There is a budget revision associated, so we will do a roll call.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
You're alert.
Aye. Okay, we have some closed session items, after which we will come back and report out, but why don't you go ahead and take us in the closed session.
The board will now adjourn to closed session. Conference with legal counsel for one item of anticipated litigation, and for a conference with the real property negotiators for two items of, two pieces of property under negotiation.
Can I give an estimated time on this?
Can you give an estimated time on the...